Please remove your hats and everyone, this meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La Junta del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro esta por empezar. Caballeros, favor de quitarse las cachuchas/ sombreros y todos favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
This meeting of the... It is 6:08 PM, this meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Present.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos. Is absent. Mayor, we have a quorum?
Thank you. Item number four, public comment.
Mayor, our first speaker is Hector Ramos. Mr. Ramos, you have three minutes.
Muy buenas tardes mayor, consejeros, managers de la ciudad. Quiero llamar su atención precisamente acerca de lo que está escrito en comentarios públicos. Hay tres opciones que se dan al consejo, a los consejeros o al gobierno cuando se hace una observación de parte del público, o sea, los que estamos de este lado. La primera es contestar con los hechos, la segunda es dar una respuesta recitando la política y la tercera es añadiendo esa pregunta o esa inquietud de la ciudadanía en la agenda del siguiente, de la siguiente reunión. En ocasiones se ha fallado a dar respuesta a las inquietudes que se presentan aquí en el, en este foro al público y creo que es muy importante que ninguna de estas observaciones se pase por alto. Es muy importante que se le demuestre atención y el respeto que merecen todos los ciudadanos con la respuesta de ustedes y el interés demostrado como lo han hecho siempre en cada asunto de la ciudad. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. María Morales. María Morales. This is a public comment, you can speak on any item on the agenda. I'm sorry?
I didn't know it went on order.
No, she wants to speak on item 16.
On, just on item 16?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We'll call you when item 16 is up.
Yes, sorry about that. María Monares. That was her. Lorenzo and Elena Juárez. Adrián Sanchez. Will you be speaking, 16? Lorena Silvestre.
May you ask all our speakers for permanent.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Now moving on to regular agenda, public hearing and ordinances. Item number 10, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Block 1, Olive Lot 1B through Higyo subdivision unit 2, replat A located at 10330 Socorro Road, Socorro, Texas from A-1 agricultural to R-2 medium density residential to allow a multifamily residential development. It is now 6:13 PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:14 PM. Item number 11, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Block 1, Olive Lot 1B through Higyo subdivision unit 2, replat A located at 10330 Socorro Road, Socorro, Texas from A-1 agricultural to R-2 medium density residential to allow a multifamily residential development. Good evening mayor and council. The item being presented to you today is a request for a rezoning of 10330 Socorro Road from A-1 agricultural to R-2 medium density residential. The property is 2.36 acres in size. It is currently vacant and the request is to change to medium density residential to allow for the subdivision of the property onto, into 10 lots for a single-family residential development and a ponding area as well as the dedication of right-of-wake for the road. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the request, voting unanimously at their May 2 meeting to approve the request. Planning and zoning staff also recommends approval. The location map on the next slide shows the property on Socorro Road just south of Olgin Road and Socorro Road. The next map shows the zoning. As I mentioned, the property is zoned agricultural. The property to the north and west is agricultural and residential to the south with some commercial zoning to the south, but that land is also vacant and then across Socorro Road is residential. These are photographs of the property from McKenzie and Place looking north onto the property and then east. The next photograph shows the aerial image of the property. In the center, again vacant. Public notice was sent to property owners within 200 feet of the zoning property, sorry, the request and no notice, no letters of comments of support or denial were received. No one spoke in either opposition or support for the request at the planning and zoning commission meeting. And this is a view of the plat that they are proposing should you approve this rezoning request. 15 units between a little over 6,000 acres. Well, I can go into the details of the plat request as it's a later item on the agenda. With that, staff can answer any questions that council might have. Questions? Mr. Cruz.
Ms. Kimito, they're allowed to build 15 units, but I think I counted 11, is that correct?
There are 10 units, the one farthest to the east is a ponding area. The triangle at the back is a ponding area.
Okay, so they're allowed to build 15, they're downsizing to 10?
Yes.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number 12, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Block 3, tract 4C-6B, Socorro Grant located at 975 Horizon Boulevard, Socorro, Texas from A-1 agricultural to R-2 medium density residential to allow for an apartment complex. It is 6:18 PM, public hearing is now open.
Mayor, we have some speakers for public hearing. Javier Carrera.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. We're excited to bring an apartment complex to the city of Socorro and...
Can you speak into the mic, please, sorry?
Sorry, we're excited to bring an apartment complex to the city of Socorro and this development is going to be a great A apartment complex with, it's an actual gated community. We have spoken with several of our neighbors around that area and they're also excited about this project since it's going to put down a little bit of sand and a lot of things are happening in there. And we will entertain any comments or any questions after you read the, after the staff's presentation, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Garbilla.
Hello. I'm just... Hi, okay, I just want to say that I'm for the apartment complex because I lived down there since '81 and it's, it's just terrible. The dirt and the weeds that come out of there because I don't know who owned it before, but they said they, they lived in, I think in Mexico and they wouldn't mow down the weeds and stuff. So it's better to have something there than to have a big old empty lot. So, and we've, we've been talking to the gentleman and he's been really nice and he's answered all our questions, so it seems like it's going to, it's going to work out really nice. The only thing I'm afraid of is the traffic. The traffic's going to be really bad and especially since they put those new mediums down Horizon. Ooh, oh, sorry, forget it. There was another bad accident Sunday on Horizon. They had Horizon closed for about an hour and a half. So I don't know, that's the bad thing that's, that's bad is, is just the, the traffic. Because it's a clear, it's, I think it's a mile from I-10 to North Loop and there's no, there's no light there to stop it, so the kids drag race up and down Horizon. So, like I said Saturday, I mean Sunday there was a wreck there and then I think Tuesday there was another wreck there. So it's just, it's just, we just need a stoplight, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Salcedo.
Good evening, my name's Sandra Salcedo and I feel the same way as my neighbor feels. I am so happy that they're going to build apartments there. And we already talked to the gentleman and, you know, he answered all the questions that we were asking him. The only thing that I forgot to ask him, how many fire hydrants are going to be put in those apartments? So, but the rest, I'm for it and we're happy because we've been living there since 1982 and it's time for them to build something. So I'm happy. Thank you very much and you have a good day.
Evening.
Thank you. All speakers? Those are all our speakers. Okay, as there are no more speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:22 PM. Item number 13, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Block 3, tract 4-C-6-B, Socorro Grant located at 975 Horizon Boulevard, Socorro, Texas from A-1 agricultural to R-2 medium density residential to allow for an apartment complex. Thank you. The property request for 975 Horizon Boulevard is for a rezoning from agricultural A-1 to medium density residential R-2 to allow for an apartment complex. The property is 19,970 acres in size and currently vacant with a largely vacant with a single-family home on the property. Proposed land use would be residential apartment multifamily for 288 apartment units. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval with the condition that the site plan be approved with, and be limited to the 288 units. Planning and zoning commission voted for approval of the rezoning request at their May 2 meeting. The location map shows the property just west of Patty Joe and Horizon in between the residential area and the future ponding area. The next slide shows the zoning. It is A-1 with residential to the, to the north and west, the ponding area to the east and then a mix of commercial and residential across Horizon. The property photos, the location photos are taken from Horizon looking toward the, toward the north and you can see up toward the interstate along Horizon on the bottom photograph. And for an aerial picture of the property, you can see it is pretty large. As I, as I mentioned, it is almost 20,000 acres. And then the next slide shows the property owners that were provided notice of this, of the public hearing at the P&amp;Z. No written opposition or support was received prior to the planning and zoning commission meeting. There were four folks who spoke in opposition at the meeting, but two of those have since spoken up in favor of the, of the request. The next slide shows the site plan and we'll pause here before I go into the larger version, but it's 18 buildings is what's being proposed. But it's 18 buildings is what's being proposed. They have adequate parking. Also provide amenities such as a clubhouse, storage units to the, to the left of this photograph, to the slide, and then the ponding area. The next two slides just show the same site plan in just a little bit more detail. Here you can see the two access drives onto Horizon. The applicant and representative have been coordinating with Tech dot and we have received from Tech dot just some minor comments that they, they moved the topmost driveway closer to the property line, that they reduced the driveways to 28 feet, and that they provide a median cut on Horizon, which the applicants have agreed to. With that, staff can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Mayor.
Ms. Villalobos.
Yes. So my question is, I know we had issues in the past of flooding, running through these properties. This has been addressed and this will not be something that the city would have to take on in the future. I know we have the onion field and whatnot. I don't know if the onion field would cover this area as well. I would assume it would because Patty Joe is further down. This property is closer to the onion field. I just want to make, make sure that they understand that at one point, the water that was running off from Horizon down to Socorro will not be an issue, that will hurt the residents there and also impact the city financially.
Staff will make engineering aware of the concerns. They've already outlined in the site plan two ponding areas, ponding areas, but that would certainly be addressed in the, in the plat review.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Now we do have a speaker for the second.
Hi, can I just confirm you guys can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Ms. Cruz.
So I have a huge concern with this and I'm surprised that more people haven't spoken up because, well, one, it's not that crazy of an idea since most people don't find out about these things until they start happening. But this sounds like 288 new units. We're talking about roughly about at least 576 new additional cars to Horizon, which you guys also approved new developments right across the street from Horizon in this particular area. It seems to me that Horizon's going to be the new Sierra Este or even worse, especially with those new mediums that still haven't been colored and continue to obviously be an issue as one of the local neighbors just mentioned that there is multiple accidents still happening. Because again, when you make them gray and blends into the street, they're hard to see. Also, they're kind of crooked and I've already said that many times. As much as I agree that some development is better than having a vacant land, especially with the dirt, we all can, we all can relate to that issue. That's a lot of units. I mean, just like a lot. And the traffic is already bad in Horizon.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up. Mr. Cruz, you had a question?
Yeah, can we have the presenter stand up at the podium again for this development? The presenter's here, correct?
Mr. Carrera.
Mr. Carrera, good evening. Can, can I have staff put that slide up there that shows the site plan with parkings? Mr. Carrera, do you know, and I know you may not know right off the top of your head, how many parkings are in this new development here?
Yes. The required parking is 420.
Per code, as per code?
Yes.
528, not 570? Okay. I want to make sure everybody's questions get answered as per code. Fire hydrant, fire safety.
We're going to have all that.
Yeah, I know, but do you know how many fire hydrants are?
I think we're going to have three fire hydrants.
Three fire hydrant, okay.
One towards the front, one in the middle, and one in the back.
Okay. Has there been discussion with Tech dot? Because the city of Socorro does not own Horizon. That's a Tech dot roadway. I haven't seen the, the traffic flow of this development here. Will, will, will it only egress into one direction? Or is Tech dot allowing for vehicles to cut across?
Okay, yes. We also submitted a TIA to staff, to your staff here, and also to Tech dot. Yes, they're dividing the egress on the topmost entrance. They're going to cut the little medium, it's about two feet wide, it's just a concrete dome. They're going to cut it off about 40 feet so that people can go in both directions. The lower one, can you put the side panel? On the, on the lower driveway, you're only going to be able to turn right. Okay? You cannot go straight out onto, onto Horizon and then go up. There's going to be the medium, that medium will remain. So that's going to stop people from going straight and shooting out. Only one, the one on the north. Any more questions?
Ms. Reyes.
I got a, I got a small question before you. Yes, sir. And I know it's going to come back for the final plat, right? What kind of landscaping are you, are you going to put in the apartments?
We're going to do kind of an average of 15% landscaping of the total land area. And it's going to be, any, like any other apartment complex, we're going to have trees also. And we're going to have trees along the property between us and the neighbors along Patty Joe. And besides that, we're going to have also a six-foot rock wall away around it to secure the whole property.
And just for, I guess for everybody who knows, you had mentioned that there's going to be somebody there guarding 24?
Yes.
Living there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It is a gated community. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nebaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Moving on to grants, item number 14, update on the city of Socorro's foreign trade zone.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Alejandro Alade, City Development Director. We're here to provide an update on the city of Socorro's foreign trade zone. As you recall, on November 3, 2022, city council voted to submit an application to the U.S. Foreign Trade Zone Board. Staff at this time would like to provide an update on that progress. And for that, we have our in-house FTZ expert, Mr. Jose Quiñones, who will take over.
Good evening, council. Jose Quiñones, I can all make recovery. Okay, here we go. Okay, could you turn next slide? So we started our, our trek back in September of 2022. The application was filed back in November of, of that year. Since then, it was docketed in February of 2023. There's a long review process. On the way, there was public comment period that occurred and a rebuttal period that ended on April 3. There were no public comments by any agency, any entity or governmental entity that we know of according to the Foreign Trade Zone Board. The application is currently in the interagency stage. That is an internal review by three departments of the United States government. It takes several months to go through, but that is the final stage of our foreign trade zone application. We do expect that by this fall, the city of Socorro will be the grant, be the grantee of a foreign trade zone and it'll be the third in El Paso County. Move to the next slide. All right. As you will see, there are many challenges and opportunities here in the region. I think I can tell you by experience that this is not the first, first foreign trade zone. It's actually the third foreign trade zone in the county of El Paso. And really the, the fourth one within a 50-mile radius if you include Santa Teresa or what's known as Doña Anna County. Those zones have many acres of property. El Paso being the largest city of El Paso, we have over 3,400 acres designated. And the site is not, at the only region that you will find circumstances when there's more than one foreign trade zone in, in a region. You'll see this in very large regions like Houston, Los Angeles, the DFW area. So El Paso not unique, okay? Socorro is really at a cross point where we can take advantage of a lot of opportunities. And one of the things I want to say, move on to the next slide, is that the port that's going to grow very rapidly next year is going to be the port known as Marcelino Sanado Torneo Port of Entry. Why is that? Because around the corner is the new highway, the Mexican highway that extends from South of Juarez, known as Samala Yuka, near the Mexico Customs Station. There, there's a new highway in construction. It is about 70%, complete as we speak, according to the latest sources I have. And when it is complete, everything south of Juarez is going to move towards that direction. As you consider that, where we are is a region, we're in the western part of the United States. So much of the trade is going to move easterly, more in an easterly direction as opposed to westerly. And what that means is that port is going to be very pivotal in the future for trade. And Socorro, with its foreign trade zone, will be at an advantage to serve the port of Torneo, being the only port connected to the port of Torneo. Okay? Next slide. So going forward, what do you see? We're adding to our economic development tool shed. Socorro will be able to contribute through higher paying jobs, a lot of opportunities for helping grow its tax base with the industrial tax base that's growing right now as we speak. The first, the large industrial park, as you well know, is the Socorro Logistics Park, right along Nuevo Weko Tanks Road, followed by other industrial developments that are now in our pipeline in Socorro, adding over 7 million square feet of industrial space. How do we manage it? We have the potential to do that with all the tools in planning and in economic development to nurture that and grow that how the city leadership wants to grow it. So that will be up to you all. Okay, we're just here to serve you. And I'm here to serve you as well to ensure that that happens in the way that the city council and future councils wants, wants it to go. So moving on, we will be able to derive, derive revenue from that as well directly. We won't depend on any outside entity to do that for the city of Socorro. So the city of Socorro can look at future revenue source coming from its foreign trade zone. And how we do that, we will manage it with a more efficient economic FTZ model than is available in the entire region. Next thing is on the marketing side, where we're not rookies at this. Being in the field for over 20 years in economic development, I bring that background and I plan to use that to Socorro's advantage to be able to develop an industrial marketing plan, which is already in the works. It is already on our website. You see it there. It is moving forward fast. There is already contacts from industrialists as we move closer to it. They are aware where our position is. And once we obtain that grant of authority, we will have that FTZ number assigned to us. We can go out there and secure and do business with the business community as we speak. Moving on. So we also want to make sure is that our small business community, which originally I know I was brought into to play a part in, is very critical. And it's very critical that we make that connection because the small business community is the soul of this, of Socorro. And what we want to do is we want to be able to tie that into large industry, not just in Socorro, but the larger industry in the metro, in the region here. And why, why do I do that? I think it's because you bring the big players, you bring the, the large investors, the firms that, that need help, that need help from everything, from the daily supplies of running their distribution, their warehouses, their production facilities. That needs a lot of sourcing. And so we hope that we can take advantage of that, but having local suppliers connect to that large international supply chain.
Moving on.
And obviously, our partnerships are very important. And as you see, we're not, we're not new at this. We've been at it for over a year. You've seen the difference as we grow Socorro. We, we're trying to make sure that the business community that's here and throughout the city of Socorro is always connected to its local government. That is very, that is very important. It shows that residents care about their community. And I'm very happy to see that, you know. I think we have a lot of opportunity to move forward as we facilitate our partnerships. And you see that we, we are building partnerships day by day as we work, bringing some of the key players, not only here in Socorro, but throughout the region, who have been partners already of Socorro for some time. All we're doing is we're adding on to it. We're strengthening those relationships in the public sector, but also in the private sector that are critical for, not just for this program, but for all the programs that are happening in the city of Socorro. With that, I'll answer any questions council may have for me.
Mr. Cruz.
So do you have that last slide? What should the city council do?
I'm sorry?
Or do we have it only us?
I didn't hear your question.
On the slide, there's another, I think you missed one slide. It says, what should city council do? Or is it that I have it only? So the slide says, what should city council do? It says, staff recommends no support for any requests from the city of El Paso to expand their zone in Socorro, no action. And number two says, staff recommends full speed ahead in the city Socorro's FTZ application. We are forming support for the Socorro FTZ. So.
As our report was to update you on, on our foreign trade zone, I think in another item you can take that out. Thank you.
My bad. Thank you.
Yeah, this was just an update.
Moving on to planning and zoning. Item number 15, discussion and action to approve Resolution 752, approving subdivision replat through Hijo subdivision unit 2, replat B being A replat of A, all of lots 1B, Block 1 through Hijo subdivision unit 2, replat A, Socorro, Texas.
Good afternoon. This is a follow-up to the item that you approved earlier, Hijo subdivision unit 2 replat B. The zoning now has been updated from A1 to R2, which would allow for the requested 10 units, 10 residential lots and the 11, and the ponding area. As I stated before, the property is vacant. The request is for residential use, which is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the request at their May 2 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So these are the same details as the previous slide. Here is the location map, the zoning of the properties. Again, we've just approved R2. The next slide is the aerial, I'm sorry, the photographs showing the property from the established street just to the south. The next slide is the aerial photograph. This is the previous plat, the previous plat was through Hijo unit 2 replat A that subdivided the property into the two pieces. And what they are proposing here is to take the one lot, and again, subdivide it into 10 lots for residential development. With R2, they have the opportunity to build 15 units per acre. They are opting for 10 because this is coming with ponding. They have a minimum, minimum lot size requirement of 6,000 square feet. The lots are between a little over 6,000 and, and 8,000 square feet. With that, staff can answer any questions.
Mr. Reyes?
I've got a question as far as the right-of-way dedication. That, and also what are the requirements as far as sidewalks, services, streetlights? Is that, that's included, or is that going to be something the city has to?
No, this, that has to be a part of the development. They need to meet all of the city's minimum requirements for sidewalk streets, services to the property. They've dedicated an additional 23 feet of road for cupic. They are going to be developing and building out that half of the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Ms. Kimiro, and I'm assuming that, that there was also a traffic impact analysis done for this development? It's right off Socorro Road, or?
I apologize.
And that's okay, we can get, yeah, yeah, we can.
I, I believe that it is not a requirement. It was the replat. And this is a replat, so it might have been required as part of the original plating? No, I, I apologize. So it would, traffic impact analysis would be required if the subdivision or the replat produced 50 trips, and these, this wouldn't produce that many trips. So it wouldn't be required.
Yeah, and then the reason why is because on something like this, I would, I would see like the need for a deceleration lane of some sort, right? Because of the heavy flow of traffic in and out? Is this going to have that or require that?
No, it, it's not a requirement. It, it wouldn't be that busy of a, a section.
And, and because we, we haven't seen any, any design, but I'm, I'm assuming that the facade is going to have that, where the mission drives the design.
Yes, it is in the historic district. And they are aware that they need to follow the city's historic mission trail guidelines.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nebaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colobilla Lobos?
Yes.
Item number 16, presentation, discussion, and action to accept the alternative analysis, summary report, and its recommendation for the alignment of Arterio 1, 1682 Boulevard from I-10 to FM 258 Socorro Road.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item today is to discuss the presentation of Arterio 1, 1682 Boulevard. I'm going to let the consultants give the presentation, but I just wanted to give a little, a little bit of background. This has been in the works for a while, and it's a, a project that's being coordinated between Techstat and the, the city of Socorro. This would help to alleviate a lot of deficiencies within the city, providing the city and residents to more access, more connections to the, an additional access and connection to Interstate 10. With that, I'll go ahead and pass the podium over to Ruben Chavez of CEA Group so that he can better inform you of, of the study and its outcome.
Thank you, Lorene. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and community. I'm, I'm glad to see a large number of community come out and speak on this project. It's a very important project for the community. As we understand it, it is one of the top transportation priorities for the area. And so we're excited to be here, excited to, to work with you and work with the community to bring this project hopefully to fruition. So as Lorene mentioned, you know, what are we talking about? Connectivity. You know, we just heard a presentation on the foreign trade zone. You know, a lot of things are happening in Socorro, and I think transportation and connectivity to the major thoroughfares has, has, has fallen behind. So, so the purpose for, of this project is to increase, accommodate, increase traffic flow to population and the developments, everything that's happening, and, and hopefully relieve, or to relieve congestion east and west and provide connectivity throughout the entire region. So, so much of, of what I'm presenting today, it's really, I want to reintroduce the project. It's been about 18 months since the community had an opportunity to see this. And so I want to provide that opportunity, present it again, kind of go through it with the understanding. And I'll talk a little bit about more on NEPA and the Uniform Act, which is really what I wanted to highlight. But so, so what's the study area? The study area is, is, is really the city of Socorro, as, as we've, as, as we've identified here in this exhibit. We, we're following a lot of the studies that have been happening in the region. The border highway east extension has been, you know, in a study phase since the mid-'90s. There's, there's been a lot of talk on how to provide connectivity and, and not a lot of consensus. But, but this follows the recommendations that were provided in that, in that Pell study covering the city of Socorro. As I mentioned right now, and I'll get into it in the next slide, you know, this process and, and how we arrived to today is following a very prescriptive process that NEPA, the federal government, has established for projects like this. And I'll talk a little bit about that. I mentioned the public involvement. These are the dates, September, October. I know it was also presented to council, I believe, in December of '21. And I believe that was the last time that, that, that the public was, was out in, in, in the, in the open. There's been a hiatus. We've come on board beginning, end of December, beginning of January to, to carry forward this, this work. I also mentioned the Uniform Act. So any land acquisition that this project will require has to follow the Uniform Act. And again, I'll speak to that on the next slide. So I mentioned NEPA and I mentioned the Uniform Act. Both of these were laws passed by the federal government in the '70s after the construction of the interstates. There, there was, you know, a lot of discussion where the roads were placed in, in disadvantaged communities, taking advantage of different things. And so the, the federal government put this process in place for any project that seeks federal funding. So if we are to have federal funding for a project, you must follow NEPA and you must follow the Uniform Act. So, so what is NEPA? For, for transportation projects, NEPA requires that all impacts are, are evaluated and addressed, not just environmental, also social, economic, and, and, and that, that affect the natural environment. It must also take into account the transportation needs of the community and, and, and select an alternative that overall is the best overall alternative for the public interest. The Uniform Act covers the acquisition of property. The long name is the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Act. It's really divided into three, into three categories. The general provisions, that contains the definitions, what it means. Title II talks about how, how you provide relocation assistance, anybody that, that is displaced. There is relocation assistance, housing payments for owners, tenants. There's assistance for every step of the way in relocating for anybody that's displaced. And then the last section covers right-of-way acquisition. It goes into what is required, that the land be appraised, that, that there be a process of offers, negotiations, so on and so forth, before, before any property is, is acquired. So, so what do we look at when we, when we do these kinds of projects? We look obviously at the engineering constraints and the environmental constraints. You know, the engineering constraints can cover things like bridges. You know, we, we for sure, on any project that you do of this magnitude, want to provide a bridge over the railroad, for example. You don't want another at-grade crossing. So you want bridges. You want to look at, at floodplain issues. You know, the floodplain maps are getting ready to be modified, so there'll be a change to that. But we look at that. We look at the drainage, hydrology, hydraulics, the impacts to right-of-way, to parcels, so on and so forth. On the environmental side, we look at, at the, the human environment, right? Archaeology, you know, are we disturbing any, any sites that are maybe sacred or, or serve a different purpose that, that, you know, that, that we need to avoid? We look at air quality, how, how that's going to, the increase in traffic is going to affect the air quality, noise, and, and properties and, and landowners where the project will be, will be sited. And then the natural environment will be water resources, biological resources. You know, we, we, most of the drains around here have been here before, many of us. And so they're, they're, they're historic in nature, and there's certain protections. And so we, we will evaluate all of that. Next slide. So at the 10,000-foot level, and what's been done to this point is, is three alternatives were looked at. For, for simplicity, I'll call alternative one, the, the, we'll call it the, the Vineyard Alternative. Alternative two, the Passmore. And then alternative three, I'll call Quadria, just kind of where it ends. It doesn't really affect those roads necessarily, except for maybe the first two alternatives, but, but just to kind of simplify and so that, so that we, we are going through as we're having a conversation and, and in a minute when we open it up to the public. So we'll talk about the Vineyard, the Passmore, and the Quadria alternatives. Through this NEPA process that's been followed, the, the recommended alternative at this point is alternative one. So what, why is that, why is that important? So, so all the constraints that I talked about, they were evaluated and compared to the no-build option, which, you know, obviously doesn't satisfy the purpose that we discussed, the need to, to address connectivity for the community. And that's kind of the comparison point. From that, every alternative is evaluated, you know, how many people, it's affecting, you know, the less, the higher it scores, the more, the worse it scores, and so on and so forth. Following that process is, is how the recommended alternative is, is become the viable one and what we're going to discuss today. If you go to the next slide. The cross-section that we're talking about, what are we looking at building? Well, the, the, oh, they're different in my order. This is, this is what I was just talking about, the impacts. This is how they were scored. This is simplified. It's, it's, it's in more detail in the report that, that I, I believe is, is online for the public to, to view. It was part of the agenda. But we've color-coded it just for simplicity, right? Green is better, yellow is, is in the middle, and, and red is worse. And so this is how, and, and, and I don't want to spend too much time on it. We can talk about it when the questions come up. But this is how it scored on the different, different categories of the constraints that I mentioned, engineering and environmental, and how they scored. Next slide. So what are we building? The cross-section that we're talking about is 110 feet, four lanes, with a, a shared-use path in either direction. This is just a graphical representation. Obviously, more work has to be done to, to get the more detail, you know, landscaping, things like that. You know, there'll, there'll be, again, opportunities for, for that input when we get to design. But, but I'd like to emphasize that right now, we're still in a planning phase, okay? So, so, so we've, we've done the 10,000, or the city of Socorro has done the 10,000-foot planning. And what we're here for today is to talk about the next step, which would be looking at alternative one and getting down to the 1,000-foot level for planning. Next slide. It's really hard to see, I'm sure, but this is, this is the same environmental constraints map that was shared with the public. It's, it's still online. We, we still found it online. You can still find it as part of the, the virtual public meeting that was done for this project. And, and I'm not going to spend too much time on it because, again, you really can't see it, but it, it identifies all the constraints that have been identified to date as far as the area where the project is, is, is being looked at. The exact alignment is still not set. This is still the area where, where we're looking at, where ponds could possibly be. And all of that will be determined in this next phase that, that we'll talk about in a minute. So what are the next steps? Why, why are we here? So, so again, this project has followed the NEPA process. It's recommended the viable alternative, alternative one. And what we're looking for today is, is council and the mayor's approval to move on to the next planning phase, which would be the schematic and environmental phases of the selected alternative. So we're still looking at, at, schematic would be, you know, getting, getting survey of the area, figuring out exactly the property limits that will be impacted, figuring out the exact alignment that the road will follow, right? We still have to look at the geometry based on the speed limit, what size of curves are going to be needed, so on and so forth. That can still shift that alignment. And then the drainage, right? Where, where will the ponds go? It, it's, it's a large project, will require numerous ponds to make sure that we handle all the, the runoff. And then a continuation of the environmental studies, you know, archaeological, as I mentioned. You know, we'll get boots on the ground. They'll bring in a noise, measuring equipment to measure the noise levels to figure out if there's residential too close, do we need noise walls, so on and so forth. That'll be part of the environmental studies that are left. Traffic analysis, you know, we, a very high-level traffic analysis has been done. But we're going to get into now the weeds and look at how it's affecting, you know, intersections, how it's affecting area schools, figuring out what makes the most sense. Do we adjust the alignment to, to reduce impacts, so on and so forth? And then the air quality, you know, we're, we're in a, in a non-attainment area for, for now, ozone as well, as PM10. So those studies, studies will be conducted. This next process is probably on a fast track. We're probably talking a year to 18 months, depending on the environmental and the input, because we're still, we'll have more opportunities for the public to comment, to come and look at the more specifics as we get closer to the detail. Depending on all that process could take a little bit longer, but, but that's probably the, the path that we're on is, is about 18 months for the schematic and environmental phase. And I believe that is it, right? Is there another slide? Nope. With that, you know, if there's any questions and comments, I, I know the city's done a great job reaching out to get, to get some of the community out here today. And, and Ms. Rodarte will continue to be that contact point. And obviously, we will facilitate to answer any questions that you or, or staff or the community may have. So, thank you. Is there any questions from council at this point?
Mr. Reyes?
I just got one question about the bridges. I know that last time it was, I guess, brought up, council decided that we were going to go without them. Is that like a better option to?
So in order, you, it, it'll be next to impossible to go without a bridge over the railroad. You know, we're crossing there right-of-way, and they will, you know, fight you tooth and nail for approval, you know, for, for an at-grade crossing. What I've seen done in other communities is if you want an at-grade crossing, fine, but tell me which three you want to remove and build bridges elsewhere. So, so we wouldn't recommend not having a bridge at that location. The other bridges that I'm talking about are, are more covert-like, if you will, over the Franklin Canal, over the Mesa Drain, those, those kinds of structures. Well, actually, the, the Franklin will be the same bridge as the railroad. But those types of structures, any of the drains, canals, all those, we, we call them bridges. More than likely, they'll be culverts designed to, to El Paso water improvement district standards.
Ms. Rodarte? Yes, and I just wanted to make a comment. I think the one you're thinking of is Nuevo Weko Tanks Road. That we set a bridge and then we went at-grade. Yes.
Yeah, at-grade's always cheaper, but over the railroad, it, it's, you're better off. You know, one life saved is offsetting the cost of, of that bridge. And, and, you know, it'll just be a, a much better in terms of, of, of traffic flow as well to not have to stop in, in, in instances of, of a rail crossing, so.
Any other questions? No, and we have speakers, so you're okay.
Speakers. Okay, well, thank you, and and I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here to address any other questions that may come up.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to, open for discussion?
Second.
We need a different kind of action. We need to approve, deny, postpone, modify.
Motion open for discussion?
No.
Yes, go ahead.
So for everybody's situational awareness, the agenda item here that we're supposed to take action on doesn't necessarily mean that we're adopting, we're not adopting an alternative, we're adopting a reporting summary for the study to continue. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, sir. Well, the the recommendation is to adopt number one, but you can change that.
Right, the study of number one is is how I'm I'm seeing it.
Yes, that's true.
By by the engineering firm. We're we're looking at categorical exclusion, environmental assessment, environmental impact studies and whatnot. We're at a standstill right now. This doesn't necessarily mean that we're adopting an actual alternative for construction. We're still in the planning phase. And planning doesn't mean we move on with construction and and money spent other than for planning purposes.
That is correct. This is still just the next planning phase to look at Alternative One closer, but it is not construction documents. And and one thing that maybe I I didn't emphasize enough is is this process that we're following, again, is to secure federal funding, which would be an 80-match, you know, their state, another 10% of the nearly $50 million this project is projected to cost.
And it's law for something like this.
Correct, correct. So, thank you.
Thanks.
So, motion? Would you like to make a motion?
We're 16 here. A lot of people.
Yeah.
Consultants can proceed to the next steps.
Yeah, just a motion to approve the analysis summary on agenda item number 16. Is that acceptable, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Mayor, we have several speakers. Speakers. Our first speaker, Maria Morales.
Good evening. My concern is, yeah? Good evening. My concern is Area One, is it Bowman and North Loop? Is that correct?
Yes. So if my understanding, what you're asking is what road is following? And yes, arterial, the alternative one that's recommended follows roughly Bowman to, to North Loop, to to tie, it ends at North Loop.
Okay. And like Mr. Chavez? Mr. Chavez has been saying it's been going since 1990?
The, for the border highway, it's not this project, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, I I'm the secretary to the property on North Loop and Bowman. Matter of fact, I've been trying to sell it for 20 years. But every time I get a prospect, and I've had good ones that are ready to come in and develop, and I said, please go do your due diligence. So they come to the City of Socorro, and of course, di-di-di-di, that little black cloud, well, we might bring a road here. And of course, the road's going to go on Bowman, and Bowman is on my property, which is the family. And we, as a family, have moved on from my parents' death. We're trying to close the book, if you understand where I'm coming from. We all got to move on. We're from Socorro, and we know what it is. But it's been going on that long. So my first thing, when I saw it, I said, oh, maybe we're going to get some closure. Maybe not. So I went in my car, and I said, okay, there's Horizon and North Loop, right? I-ten to North Loop, okay? Then you go down a mile, and that's where then Bowman and North Loop meets. Then you go from Farm, which is Bowman-North Loop, to the Clean Cut Off, and that's like maybe two, three, four miles?
Ms. Morales, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for public comment so Ms. Morales can continue her, her.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
So that would really cut in the property. And I have prospects that are ready to sign and develop housing for City of Socorro, which you all need to move on. Personally, the family, and personally, Socorro needs to move on. So I would really like this to be settled, because he says it's still in the planning stage. How much longer does the family have to wait? To the great-grandkids? How much longer? We need to settle this. So I can move forward and sell it and move on. Because we can't, if it cuts in the middle of the farm, it's not worth anything. You're going to be put in an I-10, a freeway, all the way down where there's a school. So I want to be counted for on this. I had never heard until meeting, until I got a call today, there was such a thing. I wasn't on the list. I would like, really like to work with people on that, if my consideration is anything worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hector Alarcón?
Good evening, council. I'm Hector Alarcón, and I'm a citizen here in Socorro. And one of my concerns is that I have tried to get information on this project for a while. I stopped at planning, zoning and planning. Nobody knew anything. I came to City Hall, it's the same thing. So I know you have to plan, but so do we, the ones that are affected. And I know that the people that are affected directly should be sent a letter, but no, we never got nothing. So I think there's a breakdown of communication someplace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Monarres? Adrián Sánchez?
Yes, good evening. So I guess it's a done deal, proposal number one. It's going to go to Bowman, is that right?
This is recommended.
Recommended, well, it's going to go right through my property. So I was here late last year, when the textile people are here and they're asking people who was willing to sell, who was not willing to sell. But if it comes to that, how are these these lots? How are these, you're going to get appraised if we? I mean, we're eventually going to have to sell it, I imagine. If the decision's made right, we're going to have.
Sir, we need to see.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's the, I'm thinking we're going to have to sell. I don't think we're going to have an option if they decide to go through a, through with a proposal number one. How are they going to be appraising all these properties? Most of the people there, they they don't want to sell. They're living the American dream. They finally finished paying off their 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 properties, they're property owners now, and most of these people are living on social security. It's the, if if they're going to go based on 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 what these properties are appraised at the central appraisal district, they're probably going to get less than half than what they would be willing to sell or would sell. I don't think that's going to be enough to to get these these folks relocated. Most of these people living on social security, most of these people already retired. It's they having to give a down payment on what we get from there, have to start all over again, 30 mortgage, 30-year mortgage. It's that my question is how how is that going to be appraised?
Mr. Sanchez, your time is up.
Excuse me?
Your time is up.
Well, we can suspend the rules, but do you have something to say?
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify is that we're required to follow the unit format when we do land acquisition. And we first try to negotiate with the families, and it's all, what the City of Socorro is looking for is a very fair process. I don't think they want to take advantage of any of their community members or anything like that. But right now, what we're trying to do is move so I know that it's the preferred alternative, but it could go miles, right? In order for us to know exactly. So it could be two miles away from Bowman, two miles to the other side. We don't know right now. We need to complete our environmental in order to make a more informative decision. But right now, the the preferred alternative is identified as it's going through Bowman, but that doesn't mean that's where it's going to end, right? But you're talking about the land acquisition. It'll be a fair process first, the attorneys. The city sits down with the families and tries to come to a happy meeting where we're all in agreement.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
It's the, I know they had one, two, and three, and the people that were here last time, they were showing that they they had the the plans out there. That that number three would cut through farmlands, which would probably affect the least amount of residents, the houses, as far as going through the, and I I kind of figure maybe that's where they were going to be doing it, since it would affect less people. It was all just bare ground instead of having to to go through all the houses. And at that point, they they made it seem like that was the best option. And I I don't know if the, why.
So unfortunately, on the studies that 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 they've made, this is the preferred alternative. However, council can select any other alternative. However, as a professional opinion, the engineers are giving what the preferred alternative is with the best outcome that connects to border highways and I-10.
Well, just throwing it out there, you know, that that I believe that that proposal number three would affect the least amount of people out there as far as houses. So that's something you guys would take into consideration.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Lorena Silvestre?
Hello, good afternoon. So your presentation was really well put. However, most of the individuals here are Spanish-speaking. So if it's okay, I'm going to just say what you've you've said in Spanish.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yes. Thank you. So we were here in the end of 2021, okay? And by we, I mean Alternative One people, okay? So I recognize a lot of the neighbors here. I recognize a lot of of the individuals who were here, who, like the gentleman just said, were fighting for this to happen somewhere else. La gente de aquí, los que están, los señores, no entienden el inglés. So ahorita no entienden que ustedes están recomendando la alternativa número uno, okay? Yo sé que es solamente una recomendación para para ver si si siguen con este camino. Es por donde van a pasar. Entonces, ¿de qué sirvió, de que perdiáramos el tiempo? ¿De que viniéramos, de que pelearamos? De que lo que el señor está diciendo que son gente de la tercera edad, que ya no tienen recursos, no tienen trabajo, no tienen, no tienen cómo empezar de nuevo. Como él dijo, nosotros estuvimos diciendo que el alternativo número tres era lo mejor para los residentes de la área. No lo están tomando en cuenta, y no lo van a tomar en cuenta. Entonces, cuando ustedes quieran decir algo, por favor dígalo en español.
Ms. Silvestre, your time is up.
I thought we were done with the whole rule situation.
We have to vote on an individual case. So I make motion to suspend the rules for now.
Second.
May I continue?
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Si me van a dejar hablar. Lo lo único que estamos pidiendo es que realmente tomen en consideración todo lo que está pasando, porque no lo están tomando.
You're not taking into consideration anything that these people have said. We spent time here dealing with this. It's been a year, over a year. So please, when you come up here and you talk about these great plans and what's the best analysis environmentally, and please take into consideration them. Turn around and look at every single of these people. They're elders. They don't have a chance to start again. They were here from the very beginning. And again, we know that when they approve the motion, because they're going to approve the motion, you guys are going to move forward with this option, how you guys say. But turn around and look at them, and please talk to them in Spanish so they can understand when you're telling them that you're going to take away their homes, what they've been building their whole life, before you come up here and try to. It's going to be a fair process. Yes, emotional too? That's going to, that's going to be a fair process. You're going to take into consideration therapy, visits to the doctor for anxiety, for stress. Because if you are, then let me tell you, you better ask the federal government for a lot of money. We've been fighting. We brought the media on board. We brought EPISO, which some of these individuals have already tried or have already gone through this process. And their land, someone tried taking their land 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and they weren't able to. So we're ready to put up a fight. And we understand that this is the best thing for the community, for Socorro, and it's growing, and it's great. Find a different alternative. This is going to affect residents that have been here since the very beginning. When nobody wanted to come to Socorro is what, they were here. So maybe you guys should take into consideration that. You guys should take into consideration that. So if you guys are going to do a study, do a study on the three options, three alternatives. Otherwise, just call it what it is, that this is where you guys are planning on building this road. Because this whole, I'm sorry, BS, that, oh, yes, it's it's only an option for now. Come on. It's not, it's not only an option for now. This is where you guys are headed. So if you truly want this to be an option, do the studies on the three alternatives and take the residents into consideration.
Joel Seraphin? Joel Seraphin?
Good afternoon, City Council, everyone. Yes, I'd like to echo the comments of the previous speakers. So first, right off the bat, let me just say that I would like Alternative One to be completely tabled and for you to strongly reconsider the other alternatives. First of all, as you mentioned, a lot of the people who live on Bowman have been there for a very, very, very long time. They're elderly. They don't have the money. So if Alternative One goes through and they use a uniform act, they're going to offer to buy the property from these people who already live there. If the people don't want to sell that property, then it's going to move on probably to eminent domain, which means that the government is going to forcibly try to take the property from these people. That's absolutely going to cause lawsuits. Now, I've been to some of the other meetings, and I agree with the previous speaker, is that they mention Alternatives Two and Three, but they don't really talk about Alternatives Two or Three. They talk about Alternative One. And then they say, but we're considering all options. But what you don't do is you don't order a pizza with the toppings that you want and say, hey, what kind of toppings do you want after you've ordered the pizza? Okay, if you want people's opinion, you ask that opinion before. I'd like to petition for additional time?
Motion to.
Can we make a motion to add time to every speaker that comes into the podium for this item?
Moving forward, yes.
We have two more speakers.
Second.
Very quickly, because I understand that there's other speakers.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Ruben, Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
So my understanding is that when this was first proposed, at the time that this was proposed, there was only one roadway from I-10 to Socorro, and that was Horizon. Since then, we've now built Nuevo Weco Tanks Road. So that's the second one. Alternative Two or Three is really what we should be looking at, because Alternative One goes directly through a residential and school area. We talk about impact zones, air quality, noise, pollution, and everything like that. All of that will be disrupted and affected. A real quick look, if anybody wants to do a Google search, you can quickly see that if we were to move one and a half miles further down, you can quickly see that if we were to move one and a half miles further down to Anderson Road, it is, like one of the previous speakers says, all just either empty property or agricultural property. It does not impact, not one bit. There's not one house in there that is affected, not one school that's affected. And anybody can see right here, just move it down one and a half miles, that's it. And in fact, it's actually closer. If you started Anderson to, and I ran it through to Alameda, okay? It's actually closer than going to, through Bowman. This distance here is greater than this distance here. You're actually closer. And the difference is only one and a half miles. And we're talking about traffic on I-10. You're talking about a one-minute difference, something that you would not even notice. So if you're traveling east, a minute and a half difference or less. The speed limit there is 70 miles an hour. The exits, same thing as what would be on Eastlake and on Horizon. So less than a minute difference, 1.5 miles. And that would be the only impact. And like I said, it does not go through any residential areas. It completely avoids it. It's all rural or agricultural. Like I said, so I would strongly recommend... Every single meeting that I've attended, the residents have always objected to this project or Alternative One, as it's called. Every single time. There has never been one time when the public has been allowed to speak that the residents here have said, "This is a good idea. This is something that we want." You are our elected officials. This is what the people are telling you. This is what they want. Please reject Alternative One. Look at Alternative Two, look at Alternative Three. You can Google this. I'm more than happy to leave these papers here. Anderson Road is the solution that you're looking for. Because it's gonna, not only that, it's gonna be less expensive. Because if you go through the Uniform Act, if you do eminent domain, there's gonna be lawsuits. There's gonna be an outlay of money to purchase that property for those who are willing to sell. And for those who are not willing to sell, you're gonna have to deal with, again, those lawsuits. And eventually, you're still gonna have to pay them some money. If you go to Alternative Two or Three, you bypass all that and you minimize any impact to the residents, to the children, to the school district, it can't be any clearer. This is a win-win solution right here. Anderson Road, it's right here. Like I said, I'll be more than happy to leave it here, and I can't see how anybody could miss that. Okay? We're talking about, if you're going through Bowman Road, expanding the road, correct? You said four-lane? Four lanes. So that means you're gonna have to either remove these houses completely, uplifting somebody else, uprooting them. There goes Rojas Elementary, right there. So you have kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, your friend, your neighbor. There goes Rojas Elementary, right there. That's a big disruption, okay? Four lanes. Right now, it's a two-lane street. Those streets right now don't even have sidewalks, proper sidewalks. I think they built in just recently some minor sidewalk areas, okay? Now we're talking about expanding it to a four-lane. You're absolutely clogging into everybody's property. And that's not counting, that's just counting the roads that they had to build. That's not counting the sidewalks that they're gonna have to build. I'm sure they're gonna put drainage also, that would be correct, along the... So keep that in mind. How much property you're asking to take from all the residents on that road? Completely. And like I said, absolutely, there will be lawsuits. I'm gonna go ahead and leave this here for you. Would you like me to leave these here for you? Just so you... Anybody, would anybody like these?
Yes, I'll take them.
Raúl Solís?
Uh, can I spread 30 seconds more? Just 30 seconds more.
Quickly, sir.
This is a study from Harvard. This is called Urban Inequality, okay? And the studies continue that show 100% of the time that government agencies, planning boards, always pick low-income rural poor neighborhoods to do projects on that steal the land away from the residents, from the owners. They don't do this in higher-income neighborhoods. They don't do it in the better part of the city. They're not gonna do this on the west side, okay? They're gonna pick the low-income family. This is a study from Harvard, and there's tons of these kinds of studies. Urban inequality. Look it up.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Raúl Solís, y yo ahí en esa área de San Isidro. Vivo en 11241 San Isidro. Tengo como 35 años que compré allí. Era senior in the high school, cuando agarré allí. Y quieren venir estas personas. El puente ese que quieren hacer viene y cae arriba de mi techo, de mi casa. Y me dice mis hijas, mis nietas, "¿Qué vamos a hacer, granpa, cuando nos quiten las casas?" Ellas están chiquitas todavía, y miren lo que están haciendo en la mente de ellas. ¿Dónde nos vamos a ir? Ahorita me dice, "Gánales, granpa, gánales, para que no nos quiten otra casa." No está bien esto, lo que están haciendo. Váyense más pa' abajo, así como dice la demás persona. Usted, si me tumba en mi casa, ya no tiene fuerza ni usted para levantar otra casa. Todo eso, tienen que fijar. Ustedes como que nos tienen que echar la mano para que no pase por esto. Ahora, Episo, la asociación de Episo quiere tener una junta. Yo los invité. Ayer me hablaron apenas a mí. Hablé con ellos. Ellos tienen una junta esta tarde. No pudieron venir, pero quieren hacer una junta con toda la gente de Episo, con ustedes. Yo más, ¿qué tengo que hacer? ¿Hablarles aquí, para agarrar una junta un día? Para avisarles a ella?
A la manejadora, y los puede contactar a todos, para que los enviten.
Sí, sí. ¿A quién, a quién, Roger?
A la señorita Rodarte.
Okay, gracias.
Gracias.
Those were all the speakers, mayor.
All the speakers. Yes, Mr. Cruz?
Can I have CEA back up on the podium, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, Mr. García, go ahead. I'm sorry. And fine, go ahead. Come in. No, that's, you're exactly the person I want to talk to. So sir, we accepted alternative analysis of Murray for its recommendation, right? For Artorial One?
For Artorial One.
Now, with this, you're gonna go and do all three studies? The red, the green, the red, the green, and the purple?
No, sir. So the work that's been done to now, following the NEPA process, recommends that alternative, which is Alternative One.
Okay.
If we were to select a different alternative, we'd go back to the drawing board and start over with everything.
Right.
You would lose everything you've worked to this point, all that work that's been done. And that's why, if it's not the recommended alternative, which is Alternative One, we would have to start over from scratch.
Okay. And now, so what happens? How can I say this? So I'm gonna tell Alternative One's not gonna work. Alternative One's not gonna work. Alternative Two doesn't seem as well, but Number Three is gonna be it. I'm not selecting for everybody here. And I will take whatever I need to take from whoever gives it to me. But with passion like this, you cannot ignore it. And I'm only talking for myself. And my council and my mayor can talk whatever they wanna do. But I believe that we need to start looking at the purple one and making sure that that's probably gonna be it, if this is what we want. Thank you.
So if I can just say, as part of the PAL grant, the alternative you're talking about is the next roadway that's recommended for the community. Moving to Alternative Three, you know, again, like I mentioned, you'd have to start over. Everything that's been done to this point would have to start over. All the studies, so on and so forth, everything you've, you know, spent, all that's done. And then I would think you would want to get Clint and Sanelli involved, because really, that road, you know, it's a mile and a half further out. It's three-mile round trip. Would benefit their community more than you, yet your taxpayers would be stuck with the city's share of that for a road that benefits, you know... So I would recommend, if that's where you're headed, then to start over. But I would say then collaborate with, you know, Sanelli, Clint, and look at it as that region, and then come together to move forward with that project.
I appreciate your suggestion, and we'll do that. And just, it's okay to start over, because we didn't stop anybody's life from going on.
No, absolutely. And just for the record, so I'm the engineer doing the work. It's not me that's doing this road. It's the result of studies and the work the community's done.
Fully understand, sir. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Cruz?
Thank you, mayor. Well, who better understands being displaced more better than a Native American, right? So I understand the loss of land, okay? We experienced that in historical trauma will show that. I put myself in the people's shoes. I was elected here a couple of years ago, so this project here is something that I've been hearing about, and it's been in the study phase. But why, I guess, is Alternative One the best, the best alternative?
Again, if you go through the report, it's actually less acreage of land, the number of people that it displaces, so on and so forth. It's all, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Right, maybe I have to go back and study it more.
And we can sit down and go through the report item by item, and that way, we can look at everything exactly as it's there. But again, so we don't know where that bridge is gonna go exactly. We have an idea. It can shift, you know, a few hundred feet left, a few hundred feet right. You know, you move across the street from the school. You know, that alignment is still not set. So nothing has been identified, this is what's being displaced for sure. We just have the general idea, where Alternative One's been recommended through the NEPA process, and that's where we're at.
I understand. But so just, I mean, looking at things, and it's everybody's right to come in and speak, and I know that this council wasn't expecting individuals to show up. But the city made an effort, our staff reached out, and I'm actually happy they came out, because we make decisions sometimes without being able to listen to the community. And I think that the community today has spoken on this. And like you said, if we were to choose a different alternative, this council would have to start from scratch. But I'd rather see that than to see individuals start from scratch, to be honest with you. Again, those are just my comments.
Mr. Nevaris?
And please excuse my ignorance, but I don't recall ever approving to do the study on Artorial One. Now, was it based on the department's suggestion and lack of information for the other two? Or was it the best choice for the city of Socorro? And the reason why you included Two and Three, is it because it butts into Clint and Sanelli?
No, so all that work was done before. Like I said, I just came on board end of December, January. This was all done...
No, we take full responsibility.
Prior to. And it's a planning process that's been ongoing for a couple of years, looking at the different alternatives. I did not select them. I did not do the analysis. I did not do the constraints.
So those folks should have been here.
No, 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 no. That is the NEPA process that was followed, and that's what led to Alternative One. So at the 10,000-foot level, all three alternatives were looked at equally and compared to the no-build. From that, the Alternative One is the one that's being recommended. So nobody has selected one.
Who's recommending it?
The NEPA process.
Okay.
The process...
Well, they're completely wrong. And what we're recommending here is Artorial Three. And if we have to go back to the drawing board and redo this, we need to do that, because it affects most of our community. That's all I have to say.
Mayor?
Ms. Villa-Los?
So who is NEPA, number one, is my question? Who is NEPA? Who makes up NEPA?
So NEPA is the process the federal government put in place in order to receive federal funding for these projects. So if you do not follow the NEPA process, the federal government will not participate in a project. So for example, if the city decides to build this road on their own, they don't need to follow the NEPA process, they don't need to follow the Uniform Act. But 100% of the funding will be the community's responsibility. If you want 80% participation from the federal government, then you have to follow the NEPA process. You need to follow the Uniform Act that prescribes how you acquire the property, and that's how the federal government participates.
And you don't think Artorial Three follows the NEPA process? What is difference between One and Three? What's the process?
So again, so it's in the report, and it's all the constraints that were looked at. If you want, can you put that table back up, and we can just kind of hit the highlights? So there is data behind this chart, and all of that was in the report. But so the NEPA process says, "How many schools are you impacting?" You know, in this case, for example, the worst-case scenario was Two, because it's the school that's on Vineyard.
We're pulling the actual, that's on the backup.
Okay.
And I just wanna make a comment that the staff and the engineers, by following the NEPA process, that's why they do the selective alternative. And again, it's Texas and the Federal Highway Administration that dictates how we do. It's not the city, it's not, right? It's, if you want federal funds, you have to follow this process. It's not a popular process. It's happened in any other city that every time that, I mean, because you are taking property, right? For the betterment of the community, because we do get a lot of calls, traffic on Socorro, right? The city's growing, so we know that, we know we need the infrastructure, right? And I know, but if we don't follow that NEPA process, then we can't go to Artorial Three, because Artorial Three, the NEPA already said, "No, that's not the preferred." So we have to start from scratch, and it's okay if you wanna do that. But then we would have to select a whole different area, right? And go after other types of fundings, because we don't have funding available to do... That's a huge financial impact.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't done, and thank you, Mrs. Rodarte. But that was my, that would be my, that was my other question. Is there a fourth option? There has to be. There has to be. We have to be able to find a way, because it sounds like NEPA is a one-size-fits-all cities. And obviously, time and time again, here in Socorro, it's proven, we are not a one-size. You know, it all fits with the way Texas sometimes dictates how we should be doing things. And so we are a municipality still. Can we find a different route, a different way, other than these three options? Or can we eliminate just that one area and continue on? Does it have to be connected?
Not based on this report, because they're already telling you, following the NEPA process of what the preferred alternative is, right? And I understand, you wanna do it in a different area, we can definitely do that. But if you want federal funds, you have to follow this process. Unless you want to go after COs and don't have to want to apply through the federal highway, through the MPO, then yes, you can definitely do that. But the city would have to pay for the entire cost, which is also fine if that's something that council wishes to do. We're just providing you the information, and we're not pro or against. This is totally up to council, what they decide. We went out there, did the study, because that's what we were directed to do. All we're coming back is with the information that we gathered from those. We just executed an order, so we're coming back with. You know, but I mean, I understand.
I think there's just a lot more work to be done, and it can't be something that we can move on, you know, and continue to spend money on something that possibly, as a whole, we don't agree with.
Yes. So my recommendation is either to deny or delete the item and then reconvene. But if we delete the item, that means it can come back, and then we're gonna go after, you know, after this. out, you know, after this, again, and like the lady said, like, why prolong it, right? So if that's something that you don't want to do, I would just delete this item and then revisit it later.
One second, please.
Delete or-
Mr. Martinez?
Sorry, Mayor, Jim Martinez, City Attorney. I had a question for Mr. Chavez. My understanding of the law of NEPA is, for instance, if now, based on the alternatives that you have, if council chooses Item Three, they'll lose NEPA funding, they'll lose federal funding.
From this process, yes.
Correct. But the second half of that analysis was, I'm just not that familiar with the process. Can you go back, if you start over, can you identify three other alternatives?
Yes, you can go back and start the process again-
And still get a different result.
And then that NEPA process, again, might select the same alternative, you might end up in the same spot, maybe not, maybe it's a different alternative.
You might have three completely different alternatives.
It could be completely alternative, but you start over, right.
But I guess, but the, yeah, but the point is, and that's still following NEPA, you haven't necessarily lost federal funding if you do that.
Correct. Right now, you don't have federal funding for this. In order to apply and get the funding, you have to follow this process. If you don't, you don't get it. But yes, you can go back, start over, do a different, three different alternatives, go that route-
And you still follow NEPA, therefore you're still eligible.
And still be eligible.
Correct. And if it's not obvious, my point with that is, if council wishes to deny this or postpone it to reconsider, but you still have the opportunity, right now, if you choose a different, one of these alternatives, if you choose two or three, you're very likely going to lose federal funding, in fact, almost certain. If you start over and you are willing to pay the costs of that again, and you identify three different alternatives, you still have the chance to identify a new alternative that would still be eligible for federal funding.
Mr. Cruz?
So how can you lose something that you don't have yet? Because you have to identify a project in order to receive federal funding, so we haven't necessarily gotten federal funds, so we don't lose anything by denying this today. It's just, clarification?
But we have received federal funding to conduct the study.
Right, so my next question was for staff. Should this council decide to deny this right now, are we disqualified? Do we lose funding of any kind or anything like that? What do we get disqualified for?
You know, really, that would be a question for Tech Dot, and so I would probably say that you have that meeting with them before you take that action, only because there's reimbursements the city's getting now for the work that's going on, and they may say, we're not reimbursing you for what's been done because of that, but I can't speak to that.
And the reason I ask that question is because all the people that are sitting in here, you guys paid with your tax dollars for these studies to be conducted, and the last thing that I want to see is those funds be lost because we took a wrong action here. So rather than just flat out denying, decline, I would like to get our ducks in a row and make sure that upon doing so, we don't lose funding, or if it can be reverted a certain way to where other options can, feasible option, where the monies can be, you know, utilized in that form or fashion. That's kind of my question.
May I?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz, to answer your question as well as I can, you said, would you lose Tech Dot? Would Tech Dot agree to fund the new study? The answer is, I don't know, and I think Mr. Chavez is correct. I would have that discussion with Tech Dot, perhaps, that's probably prudent, before you act definitively on this. I can tell you from experience, 10 years ago, nine years ago, doing land acquisition for Nuevo Waco Tanks in conjunction with Tech Dot, I can tell you, they were very set. There were several roadblocks, there were several times where it appeared like that process was going to have to start anew, and I can tell you the feedback we got from Tech Dot. At that time, it may be completely different now, but they were very reluctant to contemplate continued funding if you wanted to start anew, at least with respect to that project.
Council, I just-
Mayor?
Uh, one moment, please.
Mayor, may I just interrupt, just a quick second?
Give me one moment, one moment, Ms. Villalobos.
Mr. Rodríguez?
Counsel, since you've been, I've been, I was at the gym and I was looking at the meeting. Make a quick short, can you just wave so I can speak? Because I didn't, I didn't sign up. Just give me five minutes, that's all I need.
Mayor, we do have others.
We have other speakers as well?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said you were done, that's why.
They, they are done, but I have some people that are freezing their hands up.
Okay, I'm just saying, can I talk after them? That's all. And then I could just shed some light.
Ms. Mayor, may I?
Okay, Ms. Villalobos?
Okay, I'm sorry. Real quick, I might think that I have a solution for this. Now, they were speaking about maybe shifting, you know, a mile this, a mile that. What if we were to conduct, finish that conduction with the engineers knowing that we're looking for them to look a mile away, two miles away, not impacting, and this way we don't lose the whole study, and it could be a win-win situation. And that would be a suggestion that I would like for council to consider, because we don't lose funding or lose the money that we've already, and if they can find a way of not impacting our community, just land and, you know, so that's what I wanted to say.
Ms. Rodríguez?
So just to answer her question, any way we go will impact the community, and we can't make a, oh, a mile, the environmental will determine that, not-
Right, right.
The study will determine, we don't dictate a mile here or a mile there, or we want it here. The environmental does that for us.
Okay, but-
And that's what we come back with to you all, to make a decision.
Right, and that's what the gentleman said, that it could be a mile here, a mile there, you know, something like that, and I just, I just feel that, you know, if they could look into that, maybe that could be a solution for everybody. I'm just saying.
We have other speakers?
Yes, the gentleman here, I don't know what-
Hello?
So what's your state, your name, please?
Dorensa Juárez. Okay. Thank you for taking the side of the community. I really am impressed with the council today. And every time I come to these meetings, I always hear, Alteria One, 1111. If you have to start over, do another, your study, start over, go to Three, go study it over there. I know there's new homes before Anderson on North Loop, and Anderson has a lot of big, expensive homes, so maybe they don't want to buy those properties, they'd rather come over here where they're cheaper. That's not good for the community over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
They're saying the studies have been paid by the taxpayers' dollar figure. So if we start all over again, delete this and start brand new, then we'd have to pay again. I don't mind paying again, if it's coming from my taxes, to keep my property. They make it sound like if we're going to lose and it's coming from somebody else's pocket, but it's ours. I think most of the people here would agree that we would rather lose a little bit than lose a lot. So we are willing, I am willing, and I think I speak for everyone here, we are willing to start this study again, even if it means paying a little bit of tax dollars and just starting fresh. I don't want to lose my property. I've been out here my whole life, 49 years. I grew up here, started in Escondrías, back when it was Socorro Elementary, Escondrías. Started brand new here at Rojas. My life has been Socorro, and I can't see me going anywhere else. This is where I want to retire, and this is where I want my kids to end up when I'm gone. I just don't want to get up and leave. And I think that most of the people here is what they want, and I am willing to pay more, even if it's a little bit more taxes and just start fresh. We got three proposals, they went with one and they say, well, we can't go with any other one unless we start fresh, and then we're going to lose whatever we already spent. Let's do it. I don't mind paying. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
René Rodríguez?
I'm going to try to go as fast as I can. Okay, I'm ready. When we did this, we brought that to the MPO, we put it into the destino 2045, okay? That road, just like Old Waco Tanks, our attorney Jim Martinez was with me when we built that street. We went and talked to all of the residents there because we didn't want to use eminent domain, okay? That's the last resort. The city has changed and moved forward throughout the years. People say that, oh, Socorro's the same. It's not, because I never saw any of you here for the seven years I was here. So you don't know the changes that this board has done. These are good people here, okay? So you can't put a shadow on them because of what was Socorro back then. Now they work with the constituency and they work with the residents. So please don't, you know, tell them that they're bad people because they want to do something greater for the city of Socorro. Now, we have so many, so many subdivisions popping up in North Loop, okay? I got the mayors of Clint Socorro at the time to widen North Loop, but the same thing, there's not enough road for everybody that's being built there. That's why we needed another alternative, okay? Now, you as residents, you're about 60 people here, okay, and you don't care about your taxes, and I get it, because it's your property, you're fighting for it. But the minute that they say no to this, okay, then Tech Dot is going to have the ability, because when I was talking to Tech Dot for Waco Tanks, Nuevo Waco Tanks, they were going to strip us from funding and not be eligible to redo that street, okay? So therefore, whatever money the other people are charging the city, we're going to have to pay for. And then we're going to pay another bunch to redo it. What if, what if, God forbid, it comes back to saying that that's the best alternative? Then what? Then they're going to go out and get COs, $50 million of COs. You guys won't care, but I guarantee you, the other 34,000 residents here will mind about going out for COs for $50,000. So who are they going to budge? The thing is, is that this is something for the future. Now, I'm going to say this, don't worry, because I don't think they'll go as far as to use eminent domain, okay? Now, will you be able, will you be able to be compensated? Yes, and I'm going to tell you why. Because when I was there and Jim was there, our attorney, okay, we compensated everybody, okay? Now, whether you don't want to leave or not, that's a different story, but don't say that the city is not going to be compensating you, because they will if it has to go there, okay? But just be mindful that it's going to cost us double to restart it. It's just that, okay? Now, whether they make that choice or not, it's fine, but you are going to lose funding, you're not going to be able to re-submit it again because you're not going to be eligible for the state. The reason why is because when I was there, Jesus raised, when I was in that meeting, he was talking to the state representative of Tech Dot, and that's what we were told, is that if you don't do it, it's now or never. So, one of the things is, if you don't go through that process, the process is already made, okay? If you don't do that, you lose it. Now, I understand that Mr. Cruz brought up a valid point. Oh, we don't lose anything. No, you did, because the work is done and they're going to bring a bill. You're going to pay for it out of your budget, and therefore wait to get reimbursed, but you won't. I'm telling you that. Mr. Cruz sits at the MPO, he can talk to them. He's right there, and he's going to tell them the same thing I'm saying, because I already asked that because of Old Waco Tanks. I know it's a difficult thing to do, but I'm going to tell you something. COs are not going to fly. So if you kill this project today, you're killing it for good. You cannot go, you cannot go, hold on, I'm almost done, I'm almost done. You cannot go and go to Anderson because I already talked to the both mayors and they're not going to pony up any money. Now, time's passed, maybe there's a new mayor, but they don't have the funding for it. So you can't use Anderson because you've got 120 feet wide and it's not wide enough. You're still going to have to go into encroaching Clint, not E.T.J., but their land. They're not going to allow you to do that, because back then, they said no. So, one of the things is, you need to be conscious about the decision. You can postpone it, talk to Tech Dot, and make sure what you're going, what plans you want to do, because it's a very difficult decision, because it doesn't matter how you slice it, this sword is double-sided. You got 60 people here, or you can go against 34,000 when it comes to asking for COs. So, all I'm saying is, think about it, go talk to Tech Dot just so that you have a peace of mind, and really make sure that what I'm saying is the truth. You're going to lose the funding, you're not going to be eligible for it. We don't have 54,000, for 54 million. So, I'm just saying, postpone it, go talk to, and then if you guys want to kill it, you're going to kill it and that's it, and get it over with. And that's it. I'm just saying, it's going to cost us, either way, either way. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk and to address it. And for the people, I'm just saying, you know what, just, just keep fighting and do what you're doing, okay?
Thank you, thank you. Just one more.
It's always a good thing to get both sides of the story, but really what we're talking about is a cost-benefit analysis. Is it going to cost more or less? The study and all that, the work has been done, is going to cost money, okay? So now you have a responsibility, really, for a couple of things. The people here are willing to pay what it takes to do a new study. Now, I think I heard correctly, I may be wrong, that we can go through NEPA for this study? Could we go get studies from somebody else, just out of curiosity?
So NEPA is a process?
It's a process, federal. Right, that's a process, that's correct. Can we reapply? I mean, we, I think the people here have basically said that they don't want Alternative One. Now, you put Alternative Two and Three there, but like I said, when I have been here, now maybe this gentleman over here doesn't recall all the faces, or maybe he does, of the people who have attended in the past, but what I understand and from what, from what I see here, is that Alternative One has always been put forth. I have never heard anybody speak, and maybe I missed it, maybe I didn't get the mail, but I've never seen anything for Alternative Two or Alternative Three, okay? So was it just put there as, oh, hey, let's scribble down this, Two and Three down, without doing any real study? I mean, I'm interested in knowing, because I'd rather deal from a position of knowing something than guesswork, okay? I think, I think most people here are logical, they're intelligent people, and they can decide, but they want to make an informed decision. The people here do not want to be displaced, Alternative One displaces that. And if you look at the map, if you just look at the map, now, this gentleman may be right, that Clint and Faves and Sanalizario and Torneo won't pony up any more money, that's fine, we understand that. But I also understand, when you mentioned earlier that those municipalities, towns would be impacted, well, they're impacted by moving it closer to them. They're impacted by that Anderson, now we may not be able to pick Anderson, but it's actually closer to them anyways. So, I mean, I'd like to see anything, and if you could provide any documentation for Alternative Two and Three that has been done, or if you can let us know, nothing was really done. That answers a lot of questions, because people want to speak from a position of being informed. But like I said, I've never seen any documentation showing if any studies, preliminary studies, in-depth studies for Alternatives Two and Three. I've always just heard, it was like, they picked Alternative One and then they just ran with it. So, I'd like to see any documentation that you might have, any studies that were done for Alternative Two and Three. But you're saying, right now, I think- But you're saying right now, I think, and correct me if I didn't understand you correctly, that if we go with Alternative Two or Three, we completely lose NEPA funding at this time. But I also just did some quick research, where you can reapply for some of these federal funding options.
Correct, so I think what was stated is that we need to go back and ask those questions. And there's three alternatives, right? So those three alternatives go through a matrix that the federal government gives us. And that's how they, that's how they, um, fall into, right? Based on that, that matrix that's given, those three different items. We, we look at the matrix and that's where those three, that's why that Alternative One is the preferred one.
Right, but he stated earlier that, uh, those recommendations are based on, on studies such as impact to residents in the area. Well, we should be in line with that.
Yes, and, and we have the study in the backup material.
Okay.
If you wish to give Mr. Reta your email address, we can email you that tomorrow. That way you can kind of review it and we can sit down and...
And we're even preliminary studies, do you know we're, we're done for Alternative Two and Three?
That study will show you, it's, it's a, it's a complete package.
Sure, okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, I'd like to give my, uh, my two cents. I agree with, I mean, all of you. This is, this is a great project for Socorro. Uh, it's very much needed. I think it will alleviate a lot of congestion in, in North Loop, Palamedas, Socorro Road. It not only helps Socorro, it helps Clint, Saneli, Horizon. Uh, eventually, I mean, I, I don't know how long it'll take, but eventually it will connect to the Border Highway East, uh, which would be major for us, changing Socorro for, for the better. I understand your concerns and I agree as well. So I wouldn't want to be displaced. Unfortunately, um, some of these things do require these necessary actions. And like Mr. Rodríguez mentioned, it's, it's thirty-four thousand people versus sixty people. And it's all of your tax money, it's not just the sixty people that are here, but it's thirty-four thousand people, people's tax money. Would you, I mean, if we do lose these funding, we'd have to come up with or get some COs. And I, I think that's the last thing you would want. But I understand your concerns as well. Um, so I would suggest that, uh, we postpone this item until we can speak to Techstat and see if we can find some other alternatives for you. That's my two cents. I believe Mr. Cruz, uh, did you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to postpone this item, but I also want this council to, and, and I speak, you know, I include myself. When we, we also need to take into consideration a lot of the action items that we, that we take action on from our Planning and Zoning Board when we, when we approve apartment complexes and, and, and large developments, residential and, and that nature, because these are the issues that we get stuck with and we keep developing and developing and developing. Development is good, but I think that the city right now needs to focus on commercial, not so much the residential or that, the, the large residential. So at this time, because nobody in here is a professional, we're not engineers, a lot of the folks that stood at the podium, other than CEA, those are the only people that hold degrees and have studied that discipline, who can speak on this. Other than that, nobody here is a professional or an expert at the NPO level. They don't know what the talks are gonna be between new mayor, mayors and councils and stuff like that. I think that's this council and this body's, um, opportunity to step in and, and look for other funding opportunities other than, than the COs. I think that there, there is other ways and that we can seek funding. But at this time, just because of the situation and the, all the unknowns, I think that at this time, the, the best thing to do for, for the city and its constituents is to just postpone this item, and that's the motion that's on the table right now.
Second.
And we're postponing for when, Mr. Cruz?
I'd like to postpone for... Let's do first meeting of September.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to City Manager. Item number seventeen, discussion and action to approve an interlocal agreement and bylaws for public transit through the El Paso Area Transportation Services Local Government Corporation and authorize City Manager or designee to execute agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do you want to wait or do I...
Yeah, we'll wait till they exit.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. This agreement provides transit services. I want to start by thanking APATS for addressing most of our concerns. I only have two items that I want to point out. Uh, one is we did not allocate any funding for this agreement. On Friday, May twenty-sixth, we received an updated agreement with TTI's revised calculations for Socorro local contributions, the amount for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which is now ninety-nine thousand dollars with eighty-one dollars, ninety-nine thousand with eighty-one dollars. Please keep in mind, there are only three months left for the fiscal year, and this agreement would end September thirtieth. Uh, the other item is that every entity shall be responsible for the infrastructure required to close any gaps for pedestrian connectivity to the bus shelter facility, which we know will cause, uh, will be costly based on the current bus locations. We do have Commissioner Olguín and Mr. Landeros present to answer any of your questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to take a minute to thank you all for allowing us time on your agenda to be able to speak about this very important item, the El Paso Area Transit System Local Government Corporation. And I want to thank, um, the council members who took the time out of their busy schedule to meet with our staff, Mr. García, Mr. Reyes, um, so that we could answer some of your concerns. I want to thank Mr. Rodríguez for taking the time to meet with me. It was very important to me that we heard all of your concerns. And I believe that we, um, have been able to address, uh, a majority of those concerns. I think we still have some issues that we're working through. And so I'm gonna go ahead and pass the microphone to Mr. Landero, so that he can tell us a little bit of, uh, where we can go from here in order to continue this collaboration that will be a tremendous benefit for all of the residents of the county and particularly the residents here in Socorro. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. Mr. Landeros with the El Paso Area Transportation Services Local Government Corporation Board. Um, I want to thank you again, uh, echo Commissioner Olguín's sentiments, Representative García, Representative Reyes, for you all taking the time to, to meet with, with us and Commissioner Leon, um, and, and his staff to discuss some of the outstanding issues. I think we have made some significant progress, and I think the revisions and the issues that the city brought to, uh, the attention of the LGC are gonna benefit all of the collective agreements that each agency has. I believe that there's still two outstanding issues, one of them being the amount of funding and the amount of time left in the fiscal year. It seems a little bit, um, excessive, I think it's fair to probably describe it as such. Uh, what the LGC intends to do, working with the Council of Governments, is to reconcile the funds at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, that's what's on the table now. And so what that would mean is that we would look at what the expenses actually incurred were for the remainder of the fiscal year, uh, in fiscal year twenty-three, and then as we develop the fiscal year twenty-four amount, any savings from that contract would be immediately applied to the fiscal year twenty-four. That's gonna be the recommendation, um, that our staff will make to the LGC Board. There's another option that, um, might require a little bit more work on the LGC's perspective, uh, and our staff, but I do think it's something that is a fair request and that's perhaps a prorate that, estimate what that amount is, so that that amount can come down, uh, so it doesn't place an undue financial burden on the city of Socorro. And that would hold true for all of the other agencies, right? So one of the important things to keep in mind is that we're trying to keep all the agreements as consistent as we can across all the different agencies. We want parity between what is asked of the city of Socorro versus what is asked of El Paso County, city of San Elizario. Uh, and so that's an issue that I think we can go back. Uh, and then really further define the ADA issues with regard to the stops, right? So I know that that's something that's, um, that's come up. One of the issues that, uh, we're looking at is really ensuring that the LGC is responsible for the provision and construction of the stops, including, um, uh, including provision of sidewalks. So if there's not sidewalk connectivity in the area, the ADA, um, requirements for the, for the actual bus shelter would require, um, you know, six feet of sidewalk in either direction, not necessarily connecting to a, a non-existing sidewalk. Uh, what we really need to define is that in the event that there is, um, not a sidewalk to connect to and the city of Socorro or El Paso County, for example, wanted to make that connection, that would be incumbent on the city. But to ensure that the, um, the shelter itself is ADA compliant, that really needs to fall back on the LGC. That should be the responsibility of the LGC. Uh, there's some economy of scale and ensuring that that's done, uh, at the same time for construction. We have the same contractor out there doing that work. Uh, so we can make sure that we provide that clarity. But I do think we have made some substantial progress in the agreements over the past several weeks. Uh, and I think the other item that was still outstanding also was ensuring that the LGC provides the city with the estimate for fiscal year twenty-four, uh, by next month, to ensure that the budget process, um, for the city can account for that moving forward. That is something that we're asking our consultant, the Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute, or TTI, to revise the work order and the workflow that they have on, for the projects that we're managing, so that we can ensure that we provide all governments, including the county itself, with that, um, that amount, so that it can be built into the FY twenty-four budget moving forward. Um, so the, the outstanding items, I think we are close to resolving and can, uh, can resolve. But I'm here to answer any questions that Mayor or Council you may have. Uh, I'm happy to, to take those at any time.
Mr. García?
Mr. Landeros, first of all, thank you for, for having that meeting with me. I know this contract looks a lot better than it did the first time. Uh, I appreciate that, we've been working towards it. Of course, not perfect, but it's getting there. A couple of things I have are, why, in our, uh, agenda, it says a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars for this fiscal year? I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, no, 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 I have it backwards. So the email that I got was ninety-nine thousand, eighty-one dollars. And on the agenda, it's one fifteen, seven hundred and thirty-four. Uh, there's a difference of a couple hundred thousand dollars, well, a couple twenty thousand dollars there. Um, is, is that, how is that gonna work?
So TTI was refining the numbers, and as, uh, Ms. Rodríguez mentioned, uh, at the end of last week, sent over the final numbers. So that final number came down by that twenty thousand. So that's, uh, savings back to, to Socorro. And so that's, um, the final number that we have for FY twenty-three. We're working on building the final number for FY twenty-four. But it's important to note that the FY twenty-four number is gonna be based on the expansion service, the service expansion option that the LGC Board will vote on in the coming month, uh, which is why we are hoping that we can finalize this agreement, so that Socorro has the opportunity to have an, an input on the Board to make that decision, so that we know how to structure the cost share for FY twenty-four.
Okay, uh, let me follow that. So if we don't sign on, what routes do we lose here in Socorro?
Currently, the city of Socorro has Route eighty-four, Route fifty, uh, and Route, um, Route forty. Route forty begins in, in Favis, Torneo, and then passes through the city of Socorro.
So we're losing those if we don't sign on to this?
No, so it's, it's important to note that an action to not do that does not necessarily mean that council, that the service would be, um, automatically reduced. That decision would ultimately go back to the LGC Board to offer recommendations to the county commissioners' court.
Could we lose those?
It is possible.
Okay, okay. Now, um, that's, that's good information. So, and, and we're going back to, to, okay, you brought the price down to ninety-nine, eighty-one. Um, it still says here that next fiscal year, it's gonna be five hundred thousand, sixty-three dollars, five hundred thousand, sixty-three, one ninety-eight. That's, so our fiscal year ends in August. We pay you ten days after, if we approve today, ten days, we'll give you ninety-nine thousand dollars. And then the next fiscal year, we give you, which is in August, because it kicks up right away, I can imagine. So it, it goes out to five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Is that correct?
I'm not familiar with the provision in the agreement that you're referring to, but I can tell you that what is accurate is that the FY twenty-four number is still pending. If there's a placeholder in that agreement, I think that we can work on revising that to say that that's still pending, because that agreement should only be for one fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three.
So right now, we have a charter for fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay.
We had a received most once.
Right.
Initial, um, presentation had the five hundred and sixty-three.
Okay, so now, that, that's, that's, okay, but what I'm saying is that we're gonna pay over five hundred thousand dollars for three, for three months of, we don't know what we're gonna get. And then the next fiscal year, I'm not a hundred percent sure what we're gonna get as well.
Right, so...
To me, with all due respect, sorry, all we're getting is a vote. That's what it, it feels to me. So as, as we talked, um, I wanted to make sure that we got the route to UTEP, we got the route to, from Socorro High to UTEP, with, uh, EPPCC by Yavete being in the middle. So what I, what I'm telling you right now, and what I feel right now, is that we're giving away money just for a vote. Do you know what I'm saying? I, that's the way I feel. I know people will look at it different, and there's a bunch of formulas that we're looking at, uh, to make, uh, to make sure that we, we get money back. Nothing is in stone. And, and like I told you before, I want to make sure that we, we have everything, and we have the routes we want, and we have things like that, because, uh, waiting game is not something we can do, especially with that kind of money that we can put into sidewalks, we can put into lighting, we can put to fix our parks. And, and you know that Socorro is, 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 does not have money to just put somewhere and wait a year for routes, or wait a year and a half for routes. And we had this discussion, and that's why I feel confident telling you this. But it's one of those things that, that it just doesn't make me feel comfortable giving away ninety-nine thousand, thousand dollars in, in a three-month span, and then turn around and give you four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year, and we still have the same routes. And I would love to see a plan, detailed plan, where it says Socorro's gonna get this, it's gonna get this route, and guess what? You're getting UTEP route. Because here, uh, for me, it's public education is very important, and to make sure those kids from Socorro, Torneo, Clint, get a bus straight to Yavete or trade to UTEP. And, and that's, that's my issue, and, and that's the only problem that we have now, is, is the route system. Because if we don't sign, we're gonna lose those routes, you know? And there's a ton of other things, but those are the major things as well.
Sure.
So what can you tell me about that?
Yes, sir. No, I mean, I, and I apologize for interrupting early, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to that. Um, I, I recognize, you know, working for local government, uh, myself, I recognize we have limited resources and we need to make sure that residents recognize the value of what their investment is. Uh, and so, yes, part of the participation that, that ninety-nine thousand dollar figure is, is ensuring that the city is participating in the decision-making process. That decision-making process is what's going to allow the Board and the LGC to have a discussion about, how do we provide express routes from the valley to UTEP to Yavete? You know, being the largest EPPCC campus, the central EPPCC campus for the community. Uh, but it's really only at that time that we can start entertaining that discussion, because we'll need our staff to evaluate what the cost is. And then all of those costs are what are going to affect the FY twenty-four estimate, right? So I think first and foremost, that's the value of the, the vote. That's the value of the participation, is ensuring that the service needs of Socorro are articulated to the LGC, so that we can make the service adjustments necessary to meet the needs of all the districts here and the community at large.
So it's just not paying into it, we, to get a seat at the table?
Right.
But you cannot bring me something that says, "This way we can do Socorro."
Right.
So that's, that's what I'm asking, what can you do for Socorro?
Absolutely.
With, with what we're paying, and the amount of money we're paying? Because we're the second highest next to the county paying. And, and I'm gonna have to explain to our count, our constituents, that guess what? Because I don't want to spend six hundred thousand dollars in less than a year, uh, that... Because I don't wanna spend $600,000 in less than a year that we're not gonna have these routes anymore as well. And that's, I think it's unfair that our residents are gonna lose Route 50, 84, and 40 because we're not paying to be on the chair. See what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
I need I need something where I can say to my residents, this is why we're gonna get into this, because you're gonna get this and you're gonna get that.
Right.
And so those are the things that I'm looking for because it's very difficult right now to tell my residents, we might get this. Well, it's gonna take a process. And you saw what processes happen here.
Yes, sir.
You saw this right before this happened. Processes have been happening for a year and a half and 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 that's just what happens. So, you know, it's not perfect, but I think it's the wrong time right now because we do have three, three months in the fiscal year. It just doesn't add up to me. And and I don't know if you wanna rebuttal that, but it's just my opinion.
Yeah, and then some some other context about what the investment will do on the existing routes. Currently, the county is is teed up to invest in bus stops, shelters, right? We're proposing a number of, we're proposing six full bus shelters within the City of Socorro. Those shelters can range in price from 50, $60,000 just in construction. And so you're looking at a value of anywhere from 300 to 360,000 dollars worth of capital infrastructure being placed along those routes here. Not to mention the routes that we do have planned that are going to be historic era-appropriate along Socorro Road. Those haven't been designed yet because we wanna make sure that it's a design that's very deliberate, follows historic Landmark Commission requirements here in the City of Socorro, City of San Luis Sanzario, and City of El Paso. And so we're gonna be working on that as well. So that Route 50, Route 84 shelters are pending because the designs have been more complicated. But we are committed to making that capital investment here and that has that value immediately off the bat of 360,000 dollars in addition to the decision-making process. And I will say that the the estimate for FY24 is gonna largely be based on what the consensus is from the decision-making process, right? And so that number could come down, that number could go up. It really is gonna depend on whatever the area, the each individual member, each individual community decides is a priority for them. And what's really interesting is that even that cost, you know, even if we say that that cost is $500,000, which I don't, I don't believe it would be, I think we're probably gonna, as you see the numbers, continue to come down as we really drill into them or refine them a little bit further. That the cost of operating one single route right now, the county pays 350, 360,000 dollars to operate Route 84. In partnership with the City of Socorro, County of Clint, City of San Luis Sanzario, we pay approximately that much, right? And so the cost of that route is one route. And so when you talk about economy of scale and you talk about the ability to offer individual routes, we can do more together. And I think that's the reason why the LGC was was proposed. So and then to the point about the the amount, again, if there is savings, which there likely will be savings, reconciliation carries forward. And what that effectively means is if you overpay, you receive a credit and that credit is applied to your FY24 allotment. And so the FY24 allotment, whatever that number is, would come down. So if we take, let's just call it 100,000 from the City of Socorro, we put into the LGC budget, and then the actual cost of the City of Socorro is 60,000, and these are all just illustrative example numbers, right? That means that 40,000 went unspent and the bill to Socorro in fiscal year 24 is 250. Then we take 40 from 250 and the balance is 210, and that's the new number, right? And so there's no intention of ensuring of keeping money from the City of Socorro or from the county or any of the other agencies and not applying it directly to service delivery. We wanna operate very efficiently, very effectively. We're doing this and wanna be very transparent in that process. So all of that is some of the discussion, again, that the LGC Board will also be having. So we do feel it's it's an important time for the City of Socorro to to consider participation in the LGC for all of these things. We wanna see the shelters go up. We wanna have good conversations about meeting the needs of the growing communities. You know, part of this is not just building new roadways and new arterials. That's an important component for mobility and congestion, but it's also public transit. If you can offer a public transit system that is reliable and that moves people effectively from A to B, you start to take more cars off the roads, you stop lessening the need for huge roadway expansions in the future, especially as you see more multifamily development, single-family residential along the valley, it's gonna be an important thing moving forward to consider.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Ms. Villalobos.
Ms. Rodarte, last time this proposal came up, you were very informative and the, you you felt that the proposal, the contract, the partnership was not right. How do you feel about this new proposal?
Again, I think that EPATS did a good job. I mean, the agreement went from a couple pages to now, I think it's like 25 or 30 pages. Most of our concerns are addressed. The only thing, again, that I wanted to put out on this one is that we only have three months left in the fiscal year. We did not allocate funding for this. And the connectivity, right, that Mr. I think Landeros has expressed, that the LGC would be responsible for that. I guess my issue is I see the bus shelter on the embankment of the canal. They put the bus shelter while housing someone with a wheelchair, just like we are right now. Nobody in a wheelchair can get into the embankment to be able to access the bus, right? So and I mean, I would, I would love that if they do a bus shelter where it connects to somebody that's in a wheelchair, that's able to access public transportation if they need to. Those are the only concerns. And I know that building a sidewalk or a piece of cement is not cheap. It costs money. So just something that I wanted to point out. However, I do know that Commissioner Aguin is very dedicated and Landeros to make sure that they listen to our needs. And I mean, they're listening, right? And based on our concerns, they did revamp most of their agreement.
So at this time, can we request that those three items be included? Or do we need to come back with a new proposal?
So this agreement ends September 30th. I think one of their, the way they address this is that every year will be a single agreement and then we would receive what allocated funding we need to allocate for our next budget cycle to make an informative decision if we wanna sign on the next agreement. That is something that I feel very comfortable with. As before, you're signing an agreement and we just don't know what next, you know, it seemed like we were signing blindly. Now it's, you know, fiscal year, every fiscal year, we will sign an agreement knowing what the cost would be. And the only problem with this one is just that it's $99,000, it's $100,000 that we didn't allocate for. So that that doesn't mean we can't do a budget amendment and see where we can grab other funding from, but there's only three months left in the fiscal year. So, but I do know Mr. Landeros kind of explained that they'll use that, they'll know, come back and apply it to next fiscal year. I I don't know how that would work.
I believe previously Council discussed using the funding that had been set aside for shelters. And so with the idea of leveraging some of that funding for the six shelters, if that funding still remains available, and that is available, one recommend, one thing we can maybe do, and we can work with Mr. Martinez and with Mr. Estrada from the LGC, is structure the payment in such a way that maybe that $50,000 payment is made upfront that allows the remainder of the fiscal year to run out. At the end of the fiscal year, when that reconciliation activity occurs, if there's a balance owed, then we would invoice the City of Socorro for the balance in an amount not to exceed the 99,000. And if that is not, and if there is a savings, then we would just return the money back to the city. And then important to note, if the city decides to not continue with the LGC beyond fiscal year 23 into fiscal year 24, that balance would revert back to the city, right? The LGC wouldn't keep that funding. So that's a, that might be a work, a way to work around the the budget to minimize impact to your to your operating budget right now in the middle of fiscal year.
Mr. Cruz.
So I guess, I guess the city manager's concern is is the flexibility of the contract for billing to align with our our budget. And I think that that's, those are the concerns that that you're bringing up, Ms. Rodarte, right?
Yes. So we're getting ready for budget on July 8th. We'll have our first workshop. So that's what they're working on, preparing us the amounts for next fiscal year, for fiscal year 22. But my my job is to be fiscally responsible. We did not allocate funding for this, and it's $100,000 that we're asking.
So, sorry, ma'am.
I believe.
Sorry.
I'm joking, Mr. Garcia. So just in in closing, I think that if I'm hearing correctly, having the fiduciary duty that you have to the city, you don't feel comfortable with us allotting those $99,000 for the remaining three months or to engage with the LGC? Is that what the LGC is requiring right now from the City of Socorro, is just the 99K?
Yes. Yes, that's the fiscal year 23. And then again, that amount may not.
You won't exhaust those funds? Will we receive those back in credits? And if so, can that be put into the agreement?
For fiscal year 24.
Okay.
Or in the event the City of Socorro is not in agreement with continuing with the LGC, those funds are returned back to the city.
And just for clarification on Mr. Garcia's statement is that if we sign today, we have 10 days to pay though.
We have 10 days. So so that goes, that goes right away. I'm sorry. So when would, so fiscal year 24 comes in sometime in August?
October.
October 1st, okay? So we're paying 99 and 10 days from now? Or whatever you wanna break it down to make it sound good? But then we pay another 450 on October 1st?
The city would be, yeah, the city would be informed of what the fiscal year 24 cost would be next month.
So so we still don't know, we don't have any idea. And when would you have an idea how much, because it could be 600,000 for all that we know.
That is gonna largely depend on the decision-making process that the LGC Board takes to decide what level of service expansion will will occur. And so if this, if the service expansion is minimal, the cost would come down. If the service expansion goes with the full expansion of service, you know, like a Cadillac version is, you know, vernacular you might consider using, then the cost is gonna go up.
But Route 50, 84, and 40 are free right now.
They're being provided by the county. They're not free.
Okay. So but to us, they're free, per se.
There is no cost.
There's no cost to the City of Socorro.
Yes, sir.
For Routes 50, 84, and 40.
That's correct.
But.
And, go ahead.
Go ahead, you go.
I was gonna say, and then it's important to note that a lot of the expansion that we're proposing is also being funded in part by funds at the El Paso MPO that we have secured. As we continue to add new routes, we continue to be eligible for a specific pot of money known as congestion mitigation and air quality funding, or CMAC, right? And so we can get startup operating assistance for three years and then after three years of performance, we start to receive more federal funding from the from the federal government because we report that. So Route 50, as an example, initially began as a CMAC route, and now after years of performance there, we've started to receive federal funding for it. So the cost, we've been very successful in minimizing the direct cost back to the county. But at the point that we are, we really wanna get serious about expanding service, introducing two-way routes, extending service hours, having fixed bus stops and shelters. All of that requires a significant investment. And the thought behind the LGC is to cost share that out between everyone so that we can take what we have now and then work to expand it and improve it in the future.
And I just wanna add that what triggered was that I think the expansion was because now New Mexico's coming into play. So now funds are being taken away and that's what triggered all of this. Am I correct? The New Mexico coming in and asking for those funds, so we have to be more competitive.
Right, no. So there's a, there's one more funding source and I'm trying to stop this from turning into a transportation lecture because I wanna keep you all awake. I reckon it's already past eight. But there is a specific funding category that the county has the opportunity, working with the LGC, working with their partners, to start to report back to the federal government. If we start to report that, these new routes to this specific database that is for the urban area, right? Because our transit district is in the rural transit district, so we only receive rural funding. If we start to report it in the urban area, which includes, you know, pretty much everything with the exceptions of some of the outlined communities, we can actually, we estimate to be able to provide about $2.7 million in new funding to the region. And so that 2.7 million in new funding will be split across all the agencies again and start to help reduce that cost. So we are incredibly committed to trying to identify as many diverse funding sources as we can because we recognize we're all coming, all of these funds are coming from individual residents, property owners, taxpayers. And so we expect with that infusion of cash to be able to offset some costs, work with partners at Sun Metro to provide enhanced paratransit lift service. That's one option that we're looking at. So there's, there's a great opportunity to capture more funding in the region. So we've been pretty successful and I think that's the reason why we feel confident asking for expansion of 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 our service in across the community so it can really stop, so it can really start to transition from the county service to the community service.
How many routes have you have been put since the inception of the of the committee?
We've extended, we've only extended routes in the county service area. So the new route that we've added has been Route 31, which serves the East Lake area. And the reason why that's the only one that's been added is because it's out of the county's cost. So if we add that to the LGC, it's not gonna affect Socorro's bottom line because it doesn't have any revenue miles in city limits of Socorro. It would only affect the county. And so we were, we were not making any decisions to expand service in any of the other areas because then we would be jumping the gun before the LGC had a chance to discuss whether or not we wanted to see service expansion and what that service expansion looked like.
And how long has the LCD been, LGC been in existence?
It's been in existence for a little over a year. A lot of administrative things. It's just like starting a business. You have to get your lawyer, you have to get your administrative agent, I mean, just a number of things. And so we're finally now at the cusp of really hitting the ground running with regard to implementing service expansion after a year's worth of planning and working with our partners at TTI to help evaluate what that looks like.
And what is the difference between getting in right now, 10 days from now, than October 1st?
The opportunity to provide feedback on what the fiscal year 24 route looks like. So there's an, there, there, let's say that the LGC decides to go with the bottom shelf level of service and City of Socorro wanted midshelf or City of Socorro wanted to add a route to UTEP, that process, that voice would be absent from from the process. I think that's the big, it's the big thing. In addition to having, us having to come back and evaluate the timeline on the shelters that are scheduled for the City of Socorro, I think that's another important component that we're trying to make sure that we keep that project on schedule. Because if we had to delay that a little bit, pending Socorro's recommendation or pending Socorro's decision, that would just be delaying the whole, the whole project by about 34 months.
So even if we get in later, we're we're already behind.
No, I mean, so I will say that the City of Socorro, staff, mayor, you've you've been, you've been, you've attended our meetings, staff has attended the meetings fairly consistently. We've been engaged with you in terms of developing, developing this more refined agreement. So nothing has been, there hasn't been a milestone that the city has missed that would prevent them from being an effective member of the LGC.
But.
But we're coming up to that.
But if we don't agree today, we're gonna miss that milestone, right?
We are coming up to that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reyes.
First, thank you, thank you for coming. I know it's gonna be a little, I don't know if selfish or not, but what are the odds of, if we don't get for fiscal year 2023, what are the odds of of the committee thinking of Socorro and say, you know what? Socorro needs a route to UTEP, Community College, this, this, and that? And it's gonna cost them, let's say, 100,000 without us being there? What are the odds of of LGC kind of doing the homework and and then giving us so much of a price for fiscal year 2024?
So there's, I mean, there's some opportunity, I think, when we're looking at connectivity between different communities, like perhaps introducing a circulator between Horizons and Socorro, right? That might be one option. I think some of that will be, will be naturally part of the planning process, is just, you know, looking at things comprehensively. But I think the direct voice would be far more valuable in terms of, you know, because I'll be honest, like the the idea of stopping in Valle Verde, it's the first time that that's even popped into my head, thinking about this, because there's a focus on, there's Mission here and then there's UTEP already over there, right? But Valle Verde is the largest in the central EPCC campus and that was something that But Valle Verde is the largest in the central EPPCC campus, and that was something that hadn't been discussed. So I do think that there's some value in having Socorro as part of that process. You know, and then having that vote to, to be able to do that.
And, and with all due respect, I mean, that's free, right? You know, you guys put it in there for free, that's great for us. And the only call that I have, and I'm gonna be very quite honest, we have three months to the fiscal year. It's not allocated for, and that is the biggest concern that I have. Because I would love, and, and another concern is that if we're the second highest, why don't we get another seat? You know, the county, first of all, the county can tell us what to do. They, they overpower the LGC, and then they have their two votes. Because I read in the contract, county can stop services with thirty days' notice to anywhere, and they supersede the, the LGC, right? Am I, am I wrong, right?
Right.
And that's, that's three votes. See, and that's where I'm getting at, is that my residents, if they want something, then guess what? I want to give it to them. That is my job. And public transportation is very important to me. So that's why we're having the discussion, because I can't see that happening when we're, we're, we're paying X amount of dollars and we only have one seat at the table. And what's to say, Sanelli says, you know, we don't like Socorro, or, or anybody, we don't like Socorro. And that's just me procrastinating. But, uh, and those are just things that I think about. But, you know, a route to UTEP, a route to Rio Grande, a route to EPPCC Valle Verde, those are things that, that I think we should look at, uh, even if we're not there. Because that's giving, I hope Sanelli says it, I hope Torneo says it, Clint, and they say, well, we'll get it. But it's just, I don't see a clear picture of what we want and what you have. That's my only issue. And for any plan, you need a blueprint, and I don't see that. And that's my issues. Of course, I'm only talking for myself.
Yes, sir.
We just.
Mayor.
Sorry, Mayor, Jim Martinez, City Attorney, we need to stop. We don't have a forum of quorum physically present, we need that.
Yes, we need one more.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Villalobos, did you hear that?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you guys see me and hear me?
Yes, we have to wait for a moment till one of the members of council comes back. We do not have quorum at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Villalobos, you had a question?
No, I just had a comment, uh, Mr. Landeros. And, um, Ms. Iliana, you know, we really want to work with the county. I, I'm speaking for myself, I, I'm sorry, uh, with the county. I don't like the, the cost of it. I know our residents need it. And, and we, you know, they deserve better. Those, those shelters need to be better for us. Um, I drive El Paso all the time, and I see those nice shelters out there. And, you know, I would like better shelters and much better service and, and more routes and whatnot for, for our constituents. I just feel that we're paying a lot more than any other city out there. And I understand the mileage, I understand, um, you know, we're, our, we're, our, our streets are, are, from point A to point B are, the route is, uh, uh, longer, if that's a word. But, um, and, and that's my thing. When you guys go back to the table and, and come back, consider what, what I'm saying. Our residents deserve better, uh, better routes. This is an old city, it should already have a lot more than what it does have now. And so, you know, I agree with Mr. Garcia, and he has a lot of points, you know, um, because, you know, I was one of those chi, child that grew up, you know, we didn't have, until I was sixteen and I started driving, we didn't have a car. We used the bus. And we, you know, the bus was our, our transportation for everything. And we would, when we would go places, it's not like today, you know, or to nowadays that you go and do five, six different things because you have a vehicle. Usually on a bus, you do one thing or two things, and then that's it, you know, you go home. So I just, just want you guys to remember that when, when the next year comes around and, you know, offer, offer us more. Uh, we still need a lot more in our, in our city from our transit. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
We have a motion made by Mrs. Colombia Lobos, seconded by, by Mr. Nevares. No, the motion was made by Ivan Colombia Lobos to approve.
What was the motion again, I'm sorry?
To approve. Mrs. Villalobos made the motion to approve.
Are you gonna reconsider, Ms. Villalobos?
Well, I, I like the explanation of Mrs. Rodarte. If she's comfortable, um, and there's nothing else that we need to add to this contract, then I guess it stands. If anybody else has another suggestion, I, I'm open to it.
Did we have a second?
Seconded by, what's it, Mr. Nevares?
I guess it was me, but I'm not sure. Now.
But we do have a second, so we have to take the vote.
Mrs. Villalobos is making a new motion, too.
Oh, she's making a new motion?
Oh, I am.
No, I think she's, she's.
The motion was to approve, but Mr. Nevares, did you second it?
Yes, but I will take mine back and abstain.
So we have a motion made by Mrs. Villalobos, no second.
Okay, anybody second? No second motion dies.
Who dies?
Yes. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to deny?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you very much.
Have a lovely evening, thank you.
Item eighteen, discussion and action to approve Resolution seven fifty-three, appointing City Planner Lauren Kimito to act as the Director on the El Paso Area Transportation Services Local Government Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor, requesting to delete the item since item, the prior item did not go through.
Motion to delete, second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to award RFQ twenty-three dash zero-three for this, for City Attorney Services to Mounts, Green, Myers, Safi, Paxson, and Gellitzon, PC, MGM of the firm, with Monica Perez and James Martinez being the main contacts and authorized City Manager her designee to execute agreement.
Motion to approve, second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this agenda item is to inform Council of the sealed request for qualifications, twenty-three oh-three, that was published April second and April sixth. All proposals were due and received on April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. City of Socorro received two proposals. City clerked open bids on Friday, April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at three oh-one. The review committee consisted of myself, Adriana Rodarte, Finance Director Charles Casiano, Chief of Police David Burden, Communications Director Historic Preservation Officer Victor Reta, City Development Director Alejandra Valades, and our City Planner Lauren Kimito, and HR Director Carol Candelaria. The scores were Scott Hulse, PC scored a seventy-nine, MGM scored eighty-nine. Therefore, we recommend MGM be awarded this contract. The firm was scored based on general qualifications, quality and extent of service, experience, and list of references. The awarded firms meet all requirements. You all have any questions?
How, how long is the term?
So this is just a request for qualifications. If it's awarded, then we go back and negotiate an agreement.
Yeah, Mayor.
That's why the agenda is, is standing to give us authorization to execute the agreement.
Mr. Martinez?
So we'll renegotiate, oh, I'm sorry, we'll renegotiate fees, we'll renegotiate all of that.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, we probably should have, I should have phrased the agenda item differently. You're not really authorizing the City Manager to execute a final agreement at this time. I know, but what you're doing is you're authorizing, you're, you're selecting the firm that the, that administration rated the highest. The RFQ process is, then we negotiate over terms, including the duration. Um, I can tell you, I have a professional opinion that there is no duration. We, as, as lawyers, I think our professional obligation is, we serve the client, and the client wants us to serve it. When it no longer wants us to serve it, you no longer serve it. That's how it works. Um, but in terms of fees and other terms, that's what we would negotiate. And presumably, then, if we do reach an agreement, the administration will bring that back to Council for approval.
So do we have?
That's the only question I had, because when I read the.
Well, because normally for RFQs, we've never brought back the agreement.
Yeah, no, no, but I.
Because you've always given me authorization to do so. So if Council wishes, then we can bring back the final agreement.
And that, and that's an excellent point. Um, Council certainly has the ability to delegate that to, to the administration, to, to execute the final agreement, which I guess, because that is the normal phrasing that we use for RFQs, right? Right? The, the, the reason it's, the reason I say we may, we shouldn't have phrased it that way, and that's my fault. There is an alternative, I mean, you may, the count, the, you may not necessarily reach an agreement. We will, I'm confident we will. But that it is possible that for some RFQs, you don't reach an agreement with the selected firm, then you go to the next one, and that has, Council wouldn't know about that, they'd have to bring that back and inform Council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Do you want me to bring the agreement back?
Well, yes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna motion, well, there's a motion already? So then I want to second the motion, but with.
We have a second also.
They have a second.
Well, I want to third it.
You want to add or ask whoever seconded or made the motion?
I'm, yeah, I want to propose an amendment so that staff can, can come back and, and, and. Let me ask you, the disclosure of rates and all that, that happens during executive. Is that correct, or is that something that's just already public?
No, it, it's completely, I mean, it can, but typically not, it's completely public. Our rates have been completely public.
Yes.
For ten years and the invoices that we send to the.
I want to know what I'm paying Jim Martinez when I pick up the phone.
Nobody calls him.
I, I can tell you, it's two twenty-five an hour for shareholders. And it has been since two thousand thirteen. And in inflation-adjusted dollars, I just happened to look today, that's now two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars.
Well, the firm needs a new Mercedes.
And that's why we're having Monica Perez on there, too.
And that's also why I drive a sixteen-year-old Lexus, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
We do have a second, right?
There was a second.
There was a second. Do you need an amendment?
If you want to take Mr. Cruz's.
Yeah.
Amending to sec, to select firm.
So the person that made the motion needs to rescind the motion.
I rescind the motion.
So I have a motion made by Mr. Cruz. He is amending the motion to approve and bring the contract back.
Correct, yes.
All you have to say, if you accept it.
I accept this motion.
And I second.
Sorry, guys.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty, discussion and action on providing a letter of support for the City of El Paso's FTZ sixty-eight expansion and the creation of a magnet site with Socorro Logistics Park.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so we were, staff was approached by Mr. David R. Panko, City of El Paso FTC Manager, requesting to bring this item to Socorro City Council to request a support letter for the FTZ sixty-eight expansion and the creation of a magnet site with the Socorro Logistics Park. Mr. Panko is present. If you have any question, and staff is recommending denial due to the City of Socorro's own upcoming FTC.
Motion to deny?
We have Mr. Panko here that would like to present his item.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak with you, Mayor, Council. It's a good thing that you're creating a foreign trade zone because what it does, it brings, it increases your tax base, it brings more jobs to Socorro. And the application you have in now, from your presentation, says that sometime in the fall that you will probably be coming, and most likely will become a foreign trade zone, that's a given. And then you'll be able to start bringing companies in to, that want to do the foreign trade zone program into your logistics park, you'll be able to bring it into the City of Socorro and, and increase that tax base and create jobs. So you'll have a grantee, you'll be a grantee, and you'll have to fund that grantee with your tax dollars, which is good because you'll be able to help your economy. Now, at the same time, what I'm asking is to allow us to also have that same area as a magnet site. We'll both have the same area as a magnet site, it's allowable, you can do it. But we have some clients that want to come here now. But if they come into the Socorro Logistics Park now to be and run foreign trade zone program, they're coming sometime in the late two thousand twenty-four, and we can help bring them in here in the next sixty days. So basically, what we're saying is, give us the opportunity to help you for free because our entire budget is funded by the El Paso International Airport, no tax dollars are used. And so what you'll end up doing is having two groups doing the same thing for you to build your tax base, create more jobs. You know, at the end of the line, at the end of the day, down the road, when you've got yours up and running, then we might not even activate anybody in that area, and you'll activate them all, it doesn't matter. What matters is, are they bringing those jobs to the Socorro Logistics Center? Are they increasing your tax base? That's the entire discussion, that's the, so basically, if you give us a letter of support, we can help start bringing companies here. And if you say no, then it's no. I don't have a dog in this hunt. My whole thing is, I grew up here, I've retired twice already. I'm trying to give back to the community, and that's why I'm here.
Mayor, ma'am?
Mr. Cruz?
Are, are you allowed to disclose who those potential clients that you're potentially wanting to bring in in sixty days?
I would only be able to do that when I come with an activation request, when, but I can't do that right now. But one of them is our current client, they'd like to come here, but they can't move here unless they activate. And you can't activate them in Socorro, under the Socorro Foreign Trade Zone until sometime late two thousand twenty-four, based on all the timings that it takes to do boundary modifications, activations with all the FTZ teams that currently exist in Customs and Border Protection Agency. Since if you gave us the permission to actually create that magnet site, because really, all you're doing is saying, um, from a taxing entity, we're gonna let people run the foreign trade zone program here, which then allows them to establish companies and jobs here. So it's, it's a current client, down the road, you know, once you get up and establish, if your rates are better than ours, which it sounds like they're gonna be, they're gonna want to switch over. But they can't just switch over unless they activate new with your foreign trade zone, where since they're already our client, they can move easily. And you've got a great site here. I mean, what happens a lot of the times is, is companies that are up there on the other side of I-ten, they get beat up all the time because they're not close enough to the bridge. You are, and you're right off three seventy-five. That thing is gonna fill completely. And if you make more of those, you're gonna fill those, too. And like Mr. Quinones said, it's moving to the east. When that Torneo Bridge gets up and running, you're gonna see a lot of things happening.
Hey, so since you retired twice and want to give back to the community, do you mind sending over that client then, so we can get going on our FTZ?
If you give me this letter of support, I'm bringing it.
I think it's just hard for us to create a magnet site without knowing who the potential client might be. I think that there's a, our, our, our phones are, are blowing up, to be honest with you. And I think that, uh, both municipalities should have sat down and said, hey, we're willing to bring in this client. But, I mean, I get it.
So since they do want to come here, and I would be bringing, if you give me this letter of support, I would be bringing them back here with their name on the request, so it is. I would be bringing them back here with their name on the request, so it is, um, pilot freight. They wanna move into a building. It's about two hundred thousand square feet they need. So, that's one.
Thank you, sir.
And if they can't get in the, if they have to wait until next year to get activated, they're, they won't move. It's, it's, it's very simple for them. They can't afford to lose the foreign trade zone program they currently have. So basically, you get two groups doing the same thing for you, one you're paying for, one's for free. That's, that's all you'd end up with. It's not a territorial thing. It's not. We are allowed to activate all the way from Torneo to Anthony.
Ms. Villalobos?
I hate to put Ms. Rudolarte in the spot all the time, but I, I do value her opinion on this item. If she could elaborate on her, um, on this item.
Yes, ma'am. What would you like me to elaborate on?
Uh, on this item, how, how do you feel about this item moving forward for our future? We've talked about economic, economic growth for quite some time now, and, um, and it's becoming like a dream come true, because I could remember five years ago when I started, this was just, you know, you know, an idea. And so I, I do value your opinion. You're, you meet with most of these, um, uh, people that come to us for their support.
Correct.
And, uh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So in the presentation, I think staff recommends denial due to the City of Socorro own upcoming FTC. So we have applied for, we have an application, uh, that is going to create our own FTC in our city boundaries. So all we want is to capitalize, to be able to capitalize in what's in our own city. We're not trying to go outside of our city or anything, but for so long, and we have an application, and now they're asking for support to come into our city and be able to bring in an FTC on one of our new developments. Right? But that is not my decision. That is the city council's decision, and that's why we brought it to you all.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
And we do have a motion made by Mr. Garcia to deny.
Second.
Seconded by Ruben Reyes.
Is there any other questions before?
No.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Moving on to Mayor and Council, item number twenty-one, discussion and action to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Socorro and the Mission Trail Alliance to provide technical support. Would you like to introduce?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, agenda item number twenty-one. As you all know, the El Paso Mission Trail's been named, uh, by Texas Travel Awards, the best historical site. Uh, it's, it's gained recognition, and, and I wanna thank the staff and this council for, uh, for promoting uh, and being consistent with, uh, the endeavors on the Mission Trail here in our city. Um, the El Paso Chamber has created what is now known as the, uh, Mission Trail Alliance. Um, we have staff here from, from the City of El Paso. If, if you would like to come up and speak or touch based on what the alliance and its efforts are, um, I, I feel strongly about the MOU that's been handed, not only to us, but, uh, it's been given to every person and entity that's in, uh, or part of the alliance, San Elizario, uh, the tribe, and, and the City of El Paso, and other entities such as the COG. But I'll let Omar elaborate a little bit more on that.
Good evening, Council. My name's Omar Martinez. I am a resident of Socorro, and I serve as, I, I work for the City of El Paso. Mr. Cruz serves as the Chair of the Mission Trail Alliance. It is this new committee formed by the El Paso Chamber. I was selected as Vice Chair, and so my role is really the, the technical stuff, part of it. So this is like the grant seeking, and then a lot of the planning work, the technical stuff, working with engineers and things like that, bringing them to the real decision-maker, which is Mr. Cruz, uh, as a representative of Socorro, which is where most of the Mission Trail is. So the bit, the end goal at the, for the Mission Trail Alliance is to not replicate what El Paso County and their historical commission and their subcommittee is working on for the Mission Trail. We're not replicating efforts. The mission, the mission, the real mission of the Mission Trail Alliance is to implement the county's strategic plan for the Mission Trail. So what we're doing is, we are collecting, we were combining resources, City of El Paso, Socorro, and San Elizario. Us, people like Alejandro and myself, working together to get the money, to get the policies needed to finally build the mission, the trail that we had all envisioned back in the previous planning effort. And so we come here offering resources. We come here offering a handshake and saying, let's work together, and let's get this done. Let's get that UNESCO designation that everybody wants, and let's bring those, that, those commerce, those clients that grow along the Mission Trail. That means allocating resources, and the City of El Paso thus far has allocated me. But also, we are in our budget season, just as you are about to enter it, and that will mean, for example, contributing match dollars in our grant-seeking process. We're also providing technical assistance to the El Paso Chamber to get money for planning dollars. Uh, that comes from city resources as well, uh, our GIS work, things like that, things that you need to put together that. So the MOU that Mr. Cruz mentioned is essentially the same MOU all throughout. So the county's signing it, San Elizario's signing it, Socorro's signing it, City of El Paso's signing it, ideally, right? I, I don't speak for my council. And you are, if I remember the schedules correctly, I think you all had the first council meeting, so you would be the first. I will say, if you all sign, it's a lot easier for me to take it back to my council and be like, hey, we're not the first ones. Uh, and most of the Mission Trail is within the Socorro city limit, city limits. So I, I do believe it is proper, both as a resident of Socorro and as a person managing a lot of these projects, that Socorro, uh, essentially enlists first in this initiative. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this initiative.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who's seconded? Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, discussion of virtual participation conduct for all council, boards, and, and commission meetings. Mr. Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, item number twenty-two, uh, just very briefly, I wanted to, uh, to bring up, uh, our participation when we are participating via, uh, virtual, uh, meetings. I know at times, we, we, uh, we may be out of town, we're traveling, or we're not able to attend due to illnesses. Whatever the case may be, I feel that it's important that we, uh, that we maintain, uh, a professional conduct. I know that in the past, there's been disruptions and, and stuff like that. It kinda sets us behind. It puts us behind schedule. It makes us look unprofessional at times when there's presenters, um, when we're giving virtual presentations. So I just wanted to bring that up, and, and again, the, the same rules apply to me as well. I, I don't, I don't, um, you know, I'm not exempt from this. But I just ask that if, if, if you do attend virtually, I ask that you be courteous. We owe it to the residents and the people who, uh, who elected us to be here. Uh, we had, we at least owed them that courtesy, and, and that's all I wanted to say. It's only a discussion item. No action to be taken.
Anybody else would, uh, who would like to make a comment?
Mayor, we have a speaker for this item. Maryam Cruz.
Hi.
I would like to request more than a minute and a half, so I'm just gonna say that right off the top. I signed up to speak on item twenty, and I wasn't called, and so I'm a little frustrated, because as much as I appreciate being able to attend virtually, what I don't appreciate is being completely ignored. And Ms. Nevares, that's not on you. I, I get it. Something's happened. What I'm frustrated about is that really, this has been ongoing, and I attend, actually, I mostly work remotely. This is not an issue when I'm dealing with courts, or when I'm dealing with clients, or literally anything else. I do think that, I've seen counties, the county even does, um, a pretty good, they have a good system. Not really sure why we haven't caught up yet. Um, I think we need to. I'm also speaking on this item as a board member, um, Board of Adjustments, because I wasn't really sure what was going to be discussed, at least based on, on the, the face of the agenda item. I will say that, um, again, I haven't missed any meetings, and the one meeting I was out of town, I did, uh, I was virtually present. I personally think that this agenda item is more of a personal attack, um, on a specific council member, which is just unnecessary. And I will say, regards to professionalism, I find it unprofessional when city council members are texting, or talking to each other, or breaking quorum, uh, without, uh, thinking about the residents that are waiting over three hours to speak on items, uh, and then are not given either the opportunity to speak on those items, or are, are limited to such a short amount of time, to then only be either, I've had my, uh, I've seen members roll their eyes at me. Uh, I've seen members, uh, look away from me when I have been present there, uh, in, in person. And, and some of them are, are no longer there, but, but some of you are. So I would, I do think that it's important that we continue to allow, uh, virtual presence, both for members, uh, of city council, uh, boards, and, uh, uh, commissions. But I also think it's important to allow residents to allow, uh, to be present and, and give, uh, their two cents that they wish to provide, uh, at those meetings, and that it be done in an efficient and better manner. Because it's just, it's not working right now. I can't raise my hand, my hand during a public hearing. When I'm doing this virtually, I'm not acknowledged. There's no way for me to unmute myself, uh, or call attention unless I'm texting Ms. Rudolarte. And, and really, it has to be a better way. There needs to be a better way for me or anyone to be able to participate virtually, uh, at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the, the item's not to address virtual participation, it's, it's, it's conduct. And so that's, that's all that the, uh, item was going to discuss today, was just people's conduct. There, there's been interruptions in the past. We interrupted a, a young boy's presentation the other day, because there was noise in the background. There's been instances where we go into executive, there's people in the room with the person who's, who's participating virtually. Those are the things that we can't have going on here. When there's disruptions on the table, it gets called to our attention. Uh, you can even get thrown out. But when it's virtual, I feel that sometimes, for whatever reason, you're not able to hear yourself and the noise that you're making. We can. We have speakers, and, and the noise is amplified at times because of the room and the settings. But at no time did this item, uh, address, uh, the participation of board members, council members, and stuff like that. It's their conduct, and just asking to be courteous, um, and, and, and be cognizant of, of people's time and the presentations. That is it.
Any other comments?
Mayor?
Ms. Villalobos?
So those items, those two items that Mr. Cruz has just mentioned were a one-time occasion, and they were addressed, and those were months ago, and, uh, it was not done intentionally, and I agree. We should stay professional. It wasn't done intentionally. It was just the way it happened, and it was addressed, and, uh, it no longer happened. So therefore, I think this discussion is good. I, I'm not saying it's not, but those two items that Mr. Cruz said are, were way bef- a long time ago, and they were corrected. So I don't think they should have been brought up, but other than that, I agree, um, you know, that there is a policy, and we should follow it, and I know that I do, as, you know, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rudolarte?
Mayor, I just, uh, I do wanna make a comment to Mr., Ms. Maryam Cruz and apologize. She was signed up for item number twenty-one, and Ms. Nevares didn't call. Item number twenty and twenty-two. Um, unfortunately, I was up on the podium, was not aware that she wasn't being called on, so I do wanna apologize. And I will make sure that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Can, can we at least, um, allow her to speak on, on, on the previous item? She, she, I know she spoke on-
She spoke on number twenty-two.
No, we've already-
When she wanted to speak on twenty?
Yes, that's correct. She wanted to speak on twenty.
She wanted to speak on twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah, the problem is you've already, you've already voted that.
Yeah. You would suggest no?
It's still a comment. Go, Jim. It's, it's still, uh-
Would it?
Open forum again? We're talking about the agenda item. Uh, yeah, it was, uh-
Yeah, that was long. It was a clock.
Denied.
We're supporting that, and, and you'd have to move to reconsider that. Somebody-
Is, is Cruz still there? She's still there?
No, it's still-
Ms. Nevares?
Yeah, I don't think there's, uh, there's not really a good one. Can we open forum? Open? No, because, no. The, the only way I can get there is, you've already done up the comment. You could, you could post it on a different agenda, as an item, reconsider that, that item, because I'm looking at it. With such, but we-
But then we'd have to, they'd have to vote again. Is that correct?
Yeah, but nobody voted against, so it's a really unanimous decision. So nobody can bring it back, because the only person who can bring it back is somebody who voted against the item.
So-
Well, we are unanimous in all of it.
So we can, I'm sorry, Mayor. Apologize.
Ms. Villalobos?
So we cannot reopen because we voted on it? I, I believe we've done this before, though.
There's, there's two different rules. There's one that says, have it reconsidered in the same meaning, etc. And then there's another one that place it for reconsideration in a different, the separate one. First one is actually not reconsideration. It's, the second one, rather, is not reconsideration, is to rescind the action. You're in the same meaning. Wait, so it was four, it was five to zero?
Oh. All have been unanimous.
It was five to zero to deny?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
So somebody who is in the majority would have to change their vote and say they moved to reconsider. Yeah, I actually, okay, now that I thought through that, yes, you can get there. So I do- You, yeah, I would say, you still need to get on, you still finish number twenty-two, and then after that, somebody who is in the-
It was, it was just a discussion.
Just discussion.
Okay, so you're-
No action, yes.
Yeah, then you, yes, someone can vote to reconsider item.
Twenty.
Move to reconsider twenty-two.
Item number twenty.
Twenty, yes.
So will someone make the motion?
Uh, make a motion to reconsider item twenty?
Second.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
No.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
I don't think so. Uh, I think we can let Ms. Cruz speak, correct?
Well, you, you vote to reconsider.
So we start all over?
We start all over, okay. Okay, item number twenty, discussion and action to, on providing a letter of support for the City of El Paso's FTC sixty-eight expansion and the creation of a magnet site with the Socorro Logistics Park.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to deny?
Second.
Ms. Cruz?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I will say that this has happened before multiple times, and it's always been a motion to reconsider, so I'm not really sure why there was so much back and forth, which I couldn't hear, uh, because Ms. Martinez wasn't speaking into the mic. Anyway, I wanted to speak on this item because, um, first of all, I had a question. I'm not really sure what a magnet site is, and that's, or magnet site. And that was in the face of the agenda item, and I had a question, and obviously, the gentleman had left, so, um, I'm not sure if anyone else can answer that question. And my second point was going to be that I appreciate that you guys denied it, because I do think that we wanna keep as many resources and, and things that we can do, and things that we've already built, and so it makes sense. Uh, but I also wanted to point out at the fact that there are so many already, uh, locations, uh, or buildings that are still for lease, both in the horizon and in the El Paso city limits, near the, I call it the mini Spaghetti Bowl that we have on the east side, um, by Joe Battle and I-ten. And of course, we have our sites that are still getting built and finished up. And so there's a concern there that, well, at least from an outsider's perspective, that there's so many buildings going up, but then there's actually not gonna be enough people coming in. And so I waited three and a half hours to say that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
This is to deny again, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Do you have anything to say?
No. So do we have a motion to delete items 23, 24, and 25?
Motion to delete 23, 24, and 25. Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Me... Motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz. And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Meeting adjourns at 9:27 PM.
Good night.
Good night.